Seven o'clock, this meeting is called to order. Roll call please.
Sherry.
Here.
Kathy.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Dennis.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
Doug.
Here.
Kristy.
Here. Okay, do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes from the previous meeting?
I'll move approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. We would like to welcome Kathy Weiss to the board as a new member and welcome Dennis Michael back as a returning member. So, thank you for your service. Do we have any items to be added to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. Alright, so we'll go starting with you Kathy. If you have any conflict of interest declarations, just say no. If you don't, if you do then explain what it is.
Uh, no.
No. Do we have to have state our name or is it okay if we just do this since everybody is here and no one's remote? Okay. Um, Kristy Schultz, no.
Don Kettering, no.
Dennis Michael, no.
Chris Barkle, no.
Doug Gavlin, no.
Okay, no conflict of interest. So, the next item is the reorganization of the planning commission officers. So, we're going to vote to decide who's going to be chair and who will be vice chair.
I nominate Kristy for chair again.
Okay, do we have any other nominations for chair?
I nominate Chris Barkle for chair.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations for chair? Okay. So, someone has to vote then for nominations to cease if we don't have anymore.
I'll move. Make a motion nomination cease.
Second.
Alright. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, so I guess we're gonna pass out ballots? That's what we usually do. Thank you.
Thanks.
Can you just write the word chair and then whoever you want to be chair?
Or three, Chris, can you chair?
Okay, Chris Barkle is the chair. Is that what you said? Alright, so we have four votes to three votes. Okay, so, do you want to take the chair now or do you want me to just finish doing vice chair?
You can finish doing vice chair.
Alright, so do we have any nominations for vice chair?
I'll nominate Dennis Michael.
Okay, do we have any other nominations for vice chair?
I move nomination cease and unanimous vote for Dennis Michael to be vice chair.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, Dennis. So, I gotta trade places. It's a lot easier than running a classroom, I'll tell you that.
Alright. Well, thanks everybody and I apologize if it's a little rough my first night. Moving on to next agenda item. Tim Gantcha variance applicant is requesting variance to decrease minimum side yard requirement in an agricultural district from seventy-five feet for a side yard to fifteen feet and variance of sixty feet. Said property is legally described as the north two hundred ninety and four tenths feet of the south three hundred and forty-four tenths feet of the west two hundred and twenty-five feet of the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter. Less highway lot R2 thereof, section twenty-two township ninety-five north range fifty-four west of the fifth PM. Yankton County, South Dakota, as per survey recorded in book S eighteen page one twenty-four through one twenty-five less highways and roads. And is Tim here to present?
Alright, so, I'm not, I've never done this before, so I'm not sure what you.
Uh, state your name for the record and.
Tim Gantcha.
Explain the project a little bit.
Okay, so on the east side of my house, um, we're wanting to build a morton shed. We have a lawn care business and so we've got a lot of equipment. So, right now we've got two storage units rented in a condo which is about an eight mile trip. So, every time we need something or want something, we gotta run all the way to a condo to get it. So, we're looking at building a forty-eight by forty shed on the east side of my house. We looked at trying to put it in the backyard where we would be legal. But, it was about twenty-five thousand dollars added cost because we'd have to move the transformer from Clay Union Electric, our septic tank and drain field. The excavator came out, we'd have to haul in about six foot of clay because my property slopes to the east. So, to build it up and then we would lose obviously our whole backyard, so. So, we're twenty-five grand in expenses and we don't even have a shed put up yet at that point. Um, I have offered Lyle Johnson to the east of me. I have offered to buy an acre. He wants to sell me an acre. They came back and said, um, make us an offer for the footage you need. So, from the math we worked out, we were looking at sixty-eight feet of property. Offered him thirty-five hundred dollars for sixty-eight feet of property and I was shot down. And I've also talked to Hadley to the west of me to see if he would sell me an acre and unfortunately he wasn't willing to either.
Anybody from the board have any questions for Tim?
Well, it looks like you have a lot of open space around you and, you know, he'll ask for public comment, but I don't see that it's going to infringe on a neighbor at all. You know, put it closer.
Yes, uh, my, my question was, it appears to me that it could go closer to the house.
The picture's really hard to see, but my house is built up quite a ways and there's an, it drops off real fast right there.
I see.
Would have to be about eight, a good eight feet away from the house because it just drops real quick.
Okay.
I mean, possibly if we could, uh, you know, I could talk to the excavator about digging some of that out. Uh, so let me back up. We did talk about this, but then we'd have to build a retaining wall between there and the shed because all the water would run right into the shed.
Tim, on your drawing here, your hand drawn, um, you're showing seventy-six feet. Is that from your garage to your property line? In the area where the shed would go? You have on your picture here, the garage is here and then seventy-six feet.
Oh, I think, I think, yeah, my garage, yes, the garage to the east property line is seventy-six feet.
Okay, so, and then the building is gonna be thirty wide, so that leaves you forty-six feet. So, you'd end up with fifteen, um, thirty-one feet between this building basically and the house.
Correct.
The garage.
And like, you know, we're, we can move it as far to the west as, you know, they dare let us without having to do a whole bunch more work for the retaining wall and getting rid of the water.
Well, I don't see that granting the variance is gonna cause any undue hardship for the neighbor. I mean, it's just a field. And their fifteen feet is still enough for emergency services to get around to the backside of your house if that mess, you know, if that was necessary. And other counties have much smaller setbacks on side yards and backyards than we do in the egg zone. So, I don't personally have a problem with it.
So, have you talked to the farmers that farm adjacent to that?
Uh, so Leo Nelson farms to the east of me. Um, I talked to them about a year ago about purchasing an acre from Lyle and he said it didn't matter to them. And then I said, well, if they don't sell me an acre and I can get a variance and I build here, and he said, doesn't matter to us. And as you can see in the corner, they don't even farm to the corner of the, you know, where they're circling out there. It's usually about seven foot weeds right there, so.
I will say one of the neighbors across the street came in on a different issue and he asked about it and he said he was fine with it too.
Alright, is there any other questions for Tim from the board? Alright, thanks Tim.
Thank you.
I'll open up to the public. Is there anybody who comments on project? Yep, come on up and state your name for the record.
I'm John C. Christensen and I do live right south of him, right across the road and I've been there all my life. So, I'm pretty sure that property was done long before your zoning laws started and that's why that piece of property is so terrible, small. Ideally, if Lyle would sell him an acre or two, it would open that place up and he does, his house does sit up quite high, so it really does drop off. Um, your comment about emergency things, there's plenty of room to the west side if they need to get a fire truck or something on the west side of his house, they could do that even if that shed was built. I, I can see he's gonna have to take out some of those old trees. I think it would be a benefit to the property and make it, make it look nicer and they wouldn't have to clean up trees out of the field all the time. So, I think it would benefit the place. As a farmer myself, I know easements aren't always a good thing or out in the country, but this is one of my better neighbors. We got a couple abandoned properties right south of me that seem to be revolving door for these small acreages. This is one of my best neighbors. He keeps the place nice and clean and he's improvement and he and his wife work all day and then they do this lawn care business at night. I mean, it's not like he's trying to build this shed for a boat or a camper. He, he needs a place to bring this stuff home and work on it at night, so it's ready to go the next night when he gets off work, so. If you guys could sit around giving him a variance, I guess the neighbors would be fine with it and the guys that farm it aren't here opposing it, so I, I'm sure they don't have a problem with it, but that's all.
Thanks.
Thanks, John C.
Is there anybody else from public wants to comment on this project? Yep, come on up.
And that is my land around his and I built that house, so I know how it fits. And, uh, as long as he isn't getting bothered, the farmer who's farming the land and taking any of that away with his construction of the building or anything like that, I don't care. He can go right up the lot line as long as it doesn't wreck the machinery.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Unless there's anybody else, I'm gonna close public comment on this topic. Alright, any other discussion by the board?
Well, I think it's awfully nice that his neighbors came out in support of it for him on this cold windy day. So, who else do you for having positive comments?
I'll move approval of the variance request.
I have movement, I have a.
I'll second.
Second. There's second roll call vote.
Barkle?
Yes.
Hadley?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion passes. Alright, next up. Kristy Cop variance applicant is requesting a variance to decrease the minimum side yard requirement in an agricultural district from seventy-five feet for a side yard to sixty feet, variance of fifteen feet. Said property is legally described as the north four hundred seventy-two feet of the south half of the southwest quarter, except lot eight as plotted and book SS page twenty-five and accepting track B as plotted in book S eighteen page three thirty-one and further accepting Beaver Lake Shore Edition as plotted in books S seventeen page one twelve all in section twenty-seven township ninety-five north range fifty-six west of the fifth PM Yankton County, South Dakota, less highways and roads. Is Kristy here to speak?
Yes. Uh, hello, I'm Kristy Cop. Um, we would like to build a larger shed over top the existing structure on our property. Uh, since it is larger, uh, we're requesting the variance to be sixty feet off the property line instead of the seventy-five. Uh, the reason is, uh, some, somewhere we're on top of the hill, um, it drops down quite quickly. Uh, there's also, it's hard to see on the picture, but there's also a light pole and a water uh, water, uh, well, uh, pump, hand pump there. Um, so, moving it closer would make it difficult or it might move that into the building or would you have to relocate it? Um, also on that light pole is, um, a dish for Yankton Wireless as well as a GPS tracking station for John Deere. Uh, so we were hoping to limit having to disrupt their services as well. Uh, we, we did, like, as we moved this, if we would move the shed further north, the north and east section, it drops, it's hard to see from that picture, but it drops fairly quickly. Um, we're already looking at putting where we have the shed kind of estimated. Uh, we're already looking at having probably two and a half feet of fill in that back corner, so any further remove it obviously just increases that fill. Uh, we did look at the possible, um, you know, we, going further behind the house, um, it, it drops down really quick behind and on the north side and then plus on the north side, there's no current drive, uh, so you would have to either put something else in off the road or try to wiggle around the house. I'm not really sure, but again, we're just trying to utilize the, the space that's there um, and, and limit, uh, and get it as far away from the fence line as possible. And unfortunately, the best flattest spot is right there in that front corner. The, the field, the neck, the property next to us is currently a field. And I, I, there shouldn't be any, there's no issues. Again, we're still looking at being sixty feet off that fence line.
Ms. Cop, are you, um, going to remove the existing shed that's there and then build new over or?
Yes, yes. We'll tear it, yes, we'll remove it. I don't know if I said it and I just wanna, um, mention it again. We, so on the drawing, I used, I utilized the fence line as the property line. I know the overlay on the, the county's records were slightly different. Um, but I did go, I did base our measurements off from the, the existing fence line.
And you meet the other setbacks? It's just on that one side?
Correct, yes.
Gary, refresh me, are we supposed to be addressing these questions as findings of fact at this, at this point? Before the final approval?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any other questions from the board, Kristy?
It's like a nice building.
That is the plan. Appearance wise, it will be much better looking than what we have right now.
The existing shed has been changed several times.
What was that?
The existing shed has been changed several times since it was originally built.
Okay. We've just.
Open front horse shed to start with.
Yes. Yeah, it was used for horses or something.
And again, I don't see that it's encroaching in any way on the neighborhood. And I don't see that the location of that building would obstruct anyone's view of anything, it's not out by the lake. And I do not see that it would cause any problem with the road drifting in, so I won't really see a problem with it. I've looked at some neighboring counties and their side yards are like fifty feet, one of them is thirty feet on the side yard in A, so I mean a fifteen, a fifteen foot variance is not that much in my opinion.
Well, topography of the land or?
Well, the topography gives her a hardship, the utility problem gives her a hardship.
That's a big hardship on that particular piece of property because it's all built right on the top and it really drops.
And then it just drops fast, yeah. So, I think it's a reasonable request, in my opinion.
Looks like it blend in nice too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we
Be an improvement.
Yeah, we picked colors that will definitely match the the existing house and and, you know, it'll be trimmed out nicely and getting much, much nicer than what it appears right now.
All right, thanks, Christie. Is there anybody else from the audience that would like to comment on this topic? Come on up, state your name for the record.
Greg Loost, we own the property just to the south. The bar for a variance according to South Dakota Spring Court is actually set extremely high. Has to be an extreme hardship. Moving the pole, it can be done, is it a pain? Yes, it can be done. Moving the whole horse water, is it a pain? Yes, but it can be done. It's not necessarily a unique situation for a lot of the properties here in the county. Because everyone shares the same burden responsibility of maintaining the distances. My biggest concern is snow load. And the drifting, because it is at the top of the hill, granted, we haven't had a whole lot of snow the past few years. But when it does snow and it does drift and it does blow, drifting coming off the top of that shed and crushing fence, that's where part of my concern is at. And crushing the fences is, just fencing is a pain in the butt, ten ways from Sunday. And so, having to deal with that is probably the biggest issue all the way through. The fifteen feet, you know, is it a hill to die on? Not necessarily. Like, so I'm more concerned about the fencing side of things, could the shed technically be smaller? Yeah. And you'd be within the boundaries. But I also understand what the cops have, they've got a few toys that are out there. So, I understand they want to store their equipment and whatnot accordingly. Like I said, my biggest concern is the snow loading and whatnot, if we get a blizzard comes in and just crushes the hell out of that fence and then it's gotta come in and fix the damn thing. So, that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Do you have property in twenty-seven?
We are just to the south, we're to the north and south of the cops and also to the west of them.
And there's a fence on that section line right now, huh?
Well, the, what's drawn based upon beacon is Christie had mentioned, that's not accurate, the fence line is the accurate fence line and she measured, what she said is she measured off of the actual fence line up to and it's actually, it's a step up, it probably rises five feet, six feet at least? From, yeah, from the fence, it probably rises at least five, six feet plus just before you even get to elevation of where they're gonna be looking at building.
So, your fence is five feet below their their?
When the original homeowners built that house, and Dennis, you can correct me, basically they had to come in, excavate bulldoze and flatten it out and they built up all along the south side, and so it's almost like a tabletop. And once, right now, that existing shed is set in far enough, it's over by the light pole where the horse water was and whatnot. But it flattens out because they had a riding arena in there and then it drops sharply down to the fence line, at least as tall as I am. So, the 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 original, if you wanna say base, if you will, of where everything's at is has been built up.
So, right now, the way it is, does it, the snow bury your fence and push it down the way it is?
It does, if we get large snow events, yeah, it does. But that's because it ends up piling and drifting across. Having an elevated structure, it's just gonna whip off the top of that and then drift down on the backside, just like it does on our property across the road off the backside of our shop, no different. When the wind sits there and blows and we get enough of the snow, it just ends up building up on that backside. And my concern is just because it dropped so much and then it's in that little swale, it's just crushing the fence. So.
Would you be agreeable with it if they would agree to maintain that then?
Yeah. But it'd be if they were ever moved, that same homeowner would have to sit there and do the same thing. And that's part of the concern. I mean, they've been good neighbors, haven't had any problems or whatnot, I mean, good neighbors all the way around, but people move in, people move out. And right now, Sharon and I aren't planning on going anywhere until they put us in the ground. So, that would be part of the concern. Because since we've moved in, the the cops are the third owners of that property. And then we've been here since two thousand eight, so twelve years. Any questions?
I don't think so. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
You gonna stay there forever?
I'm not guaranteeing forever, but anything.
Yeah. All right, is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to comment? All right, I will turn it back to the board, is there any other discussion?
So, is the possibility that you made the shed a little bit longer and a little narrower to fit in, is that a possibility?
If we would go longer to the east, that's where the horse water location is. There's a water hydrant on the north side of the structure. And then the east would be where the water water would be.
But you said you'd be willing to maintain the fence.
Are we able to place conditions on variance request?
Certainly, we suggest things. But I suggest you go through the final path.
I guess I struggle with the point that the building fifteen feet closer to the fence is gonna make a bunch of difference. That building, the way that property sits up there like that, the window's gonna hollow all the time. Living in that neighborhood and watching the way things go, I've never seen, even when Tony lived up there, the snow pile in the yard because there's such a wind factor on that knob. I know where Greg lives there, they're in a little dip down below and because the way their buildings are set, they might have drifting off the corner of the building, but we get drifting on top of the fences off the county roads, that bury our fences every year. And they're a lot closer than sixty feet. So, I don't, I don't have a problem with them, you know, with the fifteen foot variance, I don't think that, you know, if it was a if they wanted to be fifteen feet off the fence, I think there could be an issue more so with that, but they're still gonna be sixty feet off the fence. I don't think that that we have a lot of properties that are closer than that and, you know, we're not, we're not looking at I mean, if the only issue we're looking at is snow load on the fence, I don't I don't think that that's a enough reason to deny it.
So, are you putting that in the form of a motion?
Well, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm just, you know, trying to, where I'm coming from, I guess, a little bit is I knew that property when it was first developed was a big knob on top of the hill and the guy that bought it, I used to own the property to the north that Greg owns now. And the guy was out there one day sitting on top of the hill looking at the beautiful view of the lake down below and they wanted to build a house there and when they bought the property and set in there, they came in, had a local contractor come in and level the site and take that knob down, so there was a billable spot for the house. And then his kids were small, so they decided to build that little shed that's there now, the horse barn, it was just an open face building to the south. And had a small riding arena up there because the kids were in four H and then they moved on. And it's been remodeled, I think you guys did probably the last thing on it, but before that had been remodeled once before that, kind of closed up. So, like I say, I I don't, there's not a grove up there, there's, I mean, they have a grove to the south or to the north of the house that goes down along the creek there that stops the snow below the house, doesn't really affect anything up in the yard. So, I don't, I don't foresee a problem with snow load in that particular site, with the size of the building. Because the the property behind that, where they proposed to build to the east side of that building, that property drops down a long ways before it gets, you know, it's a long ways, it's probably, I don't know, from the top of the hill to the lake, it's probably two hundred feet. It goes, it it really goes. So, I mean, you could throw a bowling ball at the top and it'd splash right above them, it's that steep, so. So, I would make a motion to approve the variance of fifteen feet to build that and I'm citing the fact that the topography of the land to be able to build it some, you know, in another spot is pretty much unavailable. You know, I understand that the hardship of maybe moving the the power pole and stuff like that, but moving water lines and all that, again, on top of that tight little area would be not impossible, but very hard to do. So, that would be my motion is to approve the fifteen foot variance.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Yeah.
All right. Strict application ordinance reproduce undue hardship. We basically went through movement of power pole that's used by several different entities. Movement of water, fill, topography. Such hardship, it's not shared generally by other properties in the same zoning district in the same vicinity. I guess it's kind of the only one out on top of the hill by itself there.
Well, really, there's no other buildable area on that property other than where the existing building is that they're gonna take down and erect this building. They're really limited on building space in that sense.
Granting of the variant, such variance is based upon reasons demonstrable and exceptional hardship is extinguished from variations for purposes of convenience profit increase. Think that we went through that as well with the topography and moving of all the different pieces there. No variance shall be recommended for approval unless planning commission finds condition or situation of property concerning the intended use of the property concerned and intended use of the property is not of so general or reoccurring natures make reasonably practical formulation of a general regulation to be adopted as an amendment to this ordinance. I don't know if this is going to set any kind of precedent as far as houses on top of novels. Number three, written application of variance amid demonstrating special conditions, circumstances. Yes. Literal interpretation of provisions of this ordinance would deprive that kind of rights commonly enjoyed by properties in the same district under terms of this ordinance. I don't think it's going to affect the adjacent properties any, I guess. As far as the fencing situation, I could, I have quite a bit of fencing myself with a lot lower drops than five feet and I have snow tear down fences every year anyway, so I don't know. And then, as Dennis said, with this, I don't know if fifteen feet's gonna make a big difference with a snow load. Special conditions and circumstances may not result from actions of the applicant. Won't convey any special privilege. No non-conforming use of neighboring land, structures or buildings in the same district and no permitted or non-conforming use of land, structures, buildings or just other districts shall be considered grounds for the issuance of variance. I don't think we cited any. I think that we have gone through making the findings as commission. That the variance sounds reasonable. Any other comments on the findings spec?
I think you got her.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the table, I guess, are we ready to vote?
Just one, one question, do we want to put to require? Just one, one question. Do we want to put to requirement that it's their responsibility to maintain the fence? Should snow break it down?
I guess in that area of the fence, we could require that as one of the, or make that suggestion as one of the conditions of approving the variance.
That's okay with you? Greg?
Yeah, I mean, that was like major concern again. Having the structural there, anything else, the biggest concern was the backstop was, that was the issue.
See also, the thing about the fence though is you have to understand that when they own half the fence. So when they face the fence, the right half is theirs.
Depending on what way you're standing.
Yeah, but I mean, that's the South Dakota law is you face the fence and the right and the half.
When you're standing on your property.
When you're standing on your property, the right half is your.
Half is your fence.
So technically, property goes all the way to the lake, that would be their half.
Yeah, and actually like.
We're really only talking about maybe a hundred, a hundred yards or a hundred feet or some small. Okay.
Yeah, we've already, you know, we've already tried to meet with neighbors and fix fence lines when the deer knock it down. So it's, you know, it's, we understand, I mean, it's run country and.
That's part of it.
Well, the issue with the fence is if, if their snow load takes it down on their half of the fence and they don't want the neighbor's cattle on their property, they need to fix their fence. That's just the way life works in the fencing business, so. Let's vote.
Barkle?
Yes.
Heavley?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Alright, I'm gonna get this name wrong. Tom Sohn, Sohn here. Am I saying that right? Alright. Applicants are requesting to rezone the following properties from agriculture district to moderate density residential R2. Said properties are legally described as the north hundred, one hundred ninety-one feet of the south, three hundred and eighty-two feet of lot three, track one. Milens addition in the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter, section thirty-five township, ninety-four north and range fifty-five west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. And the south hundred ninety-one feet of lot three and track one of Milens addition in the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter, section thirty-five township ninety-four north, range fifty-five west of fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. According to the recorded plat thereof. Alright, station for the record.
My name is Tom Souvenir. I own and operate an auction business up in Canton, South Dakota, real estate, personal property. I'm here representing basically the estate of David A. Christensen, passed away a year, year and a half ago. I've had one sale for him, a rather large sale, and he had this other property, I believe he purchased it back in like two thousand and four. And I've driven by this property many, many, many years and always kind of thought it was kind of an eyesore. Now I'm involved with it because I'm representing the heirs and they live in Rapid City, Sioux City and elsewhere. But on our intentions, we are going to have an auction there soon, some probably early June to dispose of the property. But one of the main things is that the property is zoned as agriculture, you can't build a house on it. So, you know, we're trying to definitely maximize the value of this property because there are significant number of homes already in a row there as well as a commercial property to the north. But, but anyway, our intentions are to, you know, maximize this property with the idea that somebody will build a home there. And definitely clean it up. And now my intentions are to go in there and sell the room. There were eighty-five cars there when I first came onto this place. There's now about, I counted forty-four a week, ten days ago. Some other heavy equipment that's shot. It's just salvage. My intentions are to sell it to one person and one person only, the personal property. I'll be dealing with large-scale scrap iron people is what I'll be dealing with. But anyway, and, and those guys have the weather all to clean it up as well as, we're not forcing them to clean it up. I mean, there's junk tires out there and whatever, but I can't make them take that. The next person that's buying the property, which the auctions would be held on the same day, within an hour of each other. You know, they're gonna have to buy it to clean up. I've had numerous, numerous people have been aware of this. They're looking to build a house out in the country. There is a water line, I've understand. Haven't been able to get along with the rural water people, you know, because I'm not the owner. But, but anyway, there's water in the ditch. The family or members, members of the family that are kind of familiar with the property says there's a line stubbed in, so naturally it'll need a septic system of sorts, but just to get the property cleaned up, be able to build a house on it is what we're looking for. I did talk with, well, actually just the neighbor to the south has been the only one that's been receptive to me, you know, because but it's my understanding that most of those properties are only, they are zoned agricultural, that if their house was to go away, they would not be able to rebuild on, on the site. Possibly going through you folks. They could, you know, but way it stands right now and visiting with Bill here and, and but anyway, we're just trying to get that property cleaned up. It's located along a hard surface road. Could be kind of a little bit of a desirable acreage setting.
I appreciate your desire to clean it up. If you took a top ten list of ugly looking properties in the county, that probably would be on that top ten list. As it sits, my only question and concern would be what does it look like after the scrap metal people have left and?
Oh, it'll look a little bit like a war zone, probably better than what it looks like now. But the next person, and they're gonna have to be under that understanding that, you know, they're gonna have to clean this property. I mean, if you're buying it for a house, you're not gonna want to just kind of move it back a little bit and plant a house down up there in the middle, you know. I've, I've had, I've dealt with, and matter of fact, we, we've sold a property, quick story, we've sold an eighty acres right north of Vermillion, like five miles, right by Spirit Mount. And I sold a hundred cars there and then junk tractors and, and the house was just was later on, we sold that. That eighty acres with the house and everything in the house is all gone away. A contractor came in, you can't tell today that there was ever anything there other than they buried trees, they, they did everything. And this contractor is very interested in it as well. I kind of would hope that he, he might be the one to get it, but, but I can't guarantee that. It's gonna be a public auction. The neighbors to the south of the express to me. Now, their mother owns it, lives in Rapid City, but they live there. Got a daughter wants to come back. She wants to build a house on that property. So, and they, they've got a nice tidy place, you know. And I just think it's a big asset to the county, getting it cleaned up for one thing and, and there's no doubt about it. I'm trying to make a few dollars for my clients. There is a very good driveway into the property too, by the way. And, but where the, where the water line is that runs into the property, I don't know. I've not had, not been able to distinguish a hydrant out there anywhere. Maybe the hydrant's gone and it's been shut off. This guy wasn't much for rural water. Even his acreage had rural water into his old house. He, he turned that off many, many years ago.
Gary, there is an issue right off the bat on this about the notice of the public hearings in the letter. And that was brought to my attention today that it's given that they held before the Yankton County Commission on Tuesday, April thirteenth and not the planning commission.
Yeah, we, we were made aware of that issue too. I don't believe it's gonna cause a, cause a big issue with the missing word, but, but we can certainly bring it to the next meeting if we have to, so. Just some, for some clarifications on the building, the homes. The egg homes can be rebuilt in, in the same footprint, so just for that, to, to clarify that comment. You know, these, these lots are, are have been an ongoing issue with your appraisers too, and, and whenever there's a non-conforming thing like this where you have these small acreages with, that are still ag and, and you know, they always bring it to our attention and, and make sure that they can rebuild homes, replace homes, those kind of things and, and so he's trying to bring it into compliance. We know, we, we were hoping for more lots that might be interested. We, they only ended up two, but there's six, eight houses up in that region and, and so, but but the biggest, you know, and biggest thing people forget about is the setback issue too, you know, the seventy-five feet, they gain a lot by going to residential use where you have thirty, ten, twenty, so. So that's another advantage too, but, but but yeah, we can certainly bring it back next month if there's a concern with the, the legal.
I guess, am I missed it? Is there, is there a house on the property currently or is it just a scratch?
There's no structures whatsoever that are permanent structure. There's trailer houses that are just totally disintegrated, you know, of which they've got iron frames, those scrap iron boys will, will cut them up and take them away.
Deb.
They were always just used for storage.
Deb, can, can we motion this because time is of the essence, we'll, we'll get it done. If we're gonna do it, can we motion it with a verbal change to correct the, the air?
The issue would be whether or not the notice itself is adequate. And so, I really don't know if, I mean, the date was correct, the time was correct. What's not correct is who was gonna hear it. And so, if someone would object to it, they'd object to the formal notice. But I don't know if leaving out planning would be a legitimate objection or not. Because the date was correct, the time was correct. Everything else was correct in the notice. It was just who was gonna hear it. And I, I couldn't tell you for sure if that would basically make the notice in.
And there were no complaints by any neighbors on this?
There were none.
It appears to me it's a win-win deal for everybody. I'd like to see if there's a way we can form a motion to get approval with the change. I understand the notification.
I do have a, a problem with it though, Don, in the fact that you're taking a bare piece of land, gonna clean it up, which is a great thing, clean up all the junk on it. But you're trying to rezone it to something that it's not. And then you're gonna sell it with that rezone. This piece of property, which is no different in my mind than if I went out and built a hog barn, I went out and bought a piece of property and got a permit to build a hog barn and then turn on solar with the permit. It's brokering the permit. You're brokering a zone basically with what he's trying to do there.
But it's a lot of record. It's a lot of record, so why couldn't he build a house on it?
We just did this with, with Goat Farm where he had a option to buy on a condition that he got a rezone and then his building permit. And basically the buyer did it all after he already had the contract to buy and everything. It wasn't before the sale that the rezone or anything happened.
We're not changing the size of the lot. The lots in existence already. So I don't see why he wouldn't be allowed to, to build on it.
But he shared a rezone.
No, that is correct. It is, it is a lot of record and a home could be built on it. My impression was that from what Bill had told me, that the concern was just to make it become closer to compliance and to be able to have better setbacks and things to do that.
So Gary, I got a quick question. So what you're saying is the way that the lot sits right now, with the zoning it has right now, they could get a building permit for a home without issuing a very.
Correct, correct.
So it's not a necess, it's not necessary to rezone for him to sell it as a lot for a home.
No, it's just to bring it into compliance for its use, for its residential use and having better setbacks and things.
And you said that there's like six or eight houses right along that road?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, he's got houses close to him on both sides.
Yeah.
They're vacant, literally each one of these. That's the only vacant one, is that the rest are all.
And the one on the corner there is a commercial building. I think that's Central Farmers.
Yeah, some, yeah.
I mean, so putting one more house there isn't gonna mess up anybody's setbacks. There's homes all over it. You know what I mean? It's already a developed area. So it's not gonna affect anybody's ability to put anything in.
No, because like you said, it's an existing lot of record.
It's an existing lot of record.
The only, the only issue with an existing lot of record might be the fact that there was never a home on that.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter because it's an established lot. You know? So, I mean, if, if you're worried about spot zoning, I, in my opinion, it doesn't need to be rezoned at all. You can wait till the rest of these guys decide, okay, now we're gonna as a group go and get rezoned as residential. To me, that is the most logical course of action, that's my opinion. He's not trying to make us a lot smaller. He's not messing with the lot lines at all. The lot lines are established.
Alright, is there any other questions for Tom? Thank you.
That it?
I think so. And then I'll open up if there's anybody from the audience that wants to make a comment. Anybody want to make a comment on this topic?
Louis Johnson Volin, I've got some questions and mainly I'm sure you discussed them, but my hearing aids are broke and I'm deaf as a post, so I didn't catch it. Rezone it residential. I read the sign and it said to make it conform with the rest of the properties in the area. Are the rest of them ag or are they residential? I believe that's what it said on the sign, right? Are they, which are they?
It's all ag, isn't it?
Okay, so if this gets zoned moderate density rural housing or whatever the. moderate density rural housing, or whatever the official title is, what does that do for the setback? For livestock?
Makes an automatic half-mile setback away from residential.
Half-mile?
Yes.
Okay, so it would affect Jim Gunderson if he ever decided to add more cows and it would affect Nelson's, I believe. Yeah, they're within a half a mile. And Yegi's are okay. They're more than a half a mile away. And and none of them are those horrible capos that are just scary. These are family farms. And we're going to risk them never being able to expand or change over somebody that wants to build a house in a slough. And yes, I lived in the neighborhood my whole life and I can remember watching the neighbors that live up on top of the hill pump water over the road to try to keep the water out of their mobile home to the south. The other house that's back in there, if you notice, that's about four feet in the air. And I was surprised they could dig a basement that deep because the water table even backs up into the commercial business. Because I think they did a little fancy drainage and run a bunch of water to the east or tried to at one time to get the water off of that lot. It's a slough. I'm sorry. You could it be fixed? Sure. Buy it and haul in three foot of fill. But if it's going to affect all the surrounding businesses over a small building site, I guess I I don't see the need for it. And I don't mean to take a customer away from yours. That's just my opinion. And I am sick and tired of any time a farmer wants to do something, we have to go to court for a year and anything else just sails right through. I mean, if I had a light pole in the way of my building, I'm sure I would have gotten a variance for that. Oh, wait a minute. We went to court instead. Thank you.
Jay Cuts, Mission Hill, South Dakota. The only concern I would have about this thing is you have a commercial lot to the north of it and it basically is a commercial lot now because it was a salvage yard at one time. So you have two commercial lots and then the rest were residential. I mean, ag residential, of course. So now if he comes in and asks for a a moderate density residential in an ag district, I'd be a lot more worried about spot zoning because it increases the setbacks for the ag people around there. And there's really no reason to make it into moderate density residential because he can build a house there if he wants to. And that would also protect the farmers around there that would would maintain the the further setbacks for from residential. So I would rather see it left as as ag and just if they want to build a house there, that's fine.
Any other public comment? All right, discussion by the board. I guess the way I see it is a trade-off between more lax setbacks as far as building a house or something on the lot versus setbacks for the surrounding ag land. And since they can already build a house there regardless of what we do with the zoning. And I guess a half-mile setback trade-off to reduce a minimum yard requirement from seventy-five feet to, you said thirty, thirty, twenty, ten. I don't know if that's worth the rezone or not, but I guess that's just my thoughts on it.
Well, I think that there's a lot of things, whether we start out with public notice, yes or no, doesn't matter to me, but the overall project where you have one property owner that is trying to to create the zone. And even though you have letters here from the other people, they didn't show up and forced to support it. I'd make a motion to deny the rezone of this property.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second. Brokow, vote.
Barkle?
Uh, yes.
Hevly?
Yeah.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Now we have the Platts. Findings effect. Noted that the the public hearing notice was slightly off with the wording. To recommend approval, we recommend to disprove. Basically, it's only for convenience of setbacks on the side yards and then it's not going to affect their actual use of the land other than that one way or another. Um, I don't think it would be in accordance with the comprehensive plan based on the added burden to the surrounding ag land. Any other additions in the finding effect?
I think, you know, Chris, the the issue is this property is completely surrounded by ag. And while there is four or five houses there that were there, all lots of record prior to zoning. This lot was also. It is not stopping from a house being built on that piece of property as it exists.
It's a lot of record. You can still build a home there.
Yeah, it's a lot of record. I guess my my concern, or I guess that's up to the when they sell the property, is because it was a salvage yard in the condition of the soils that they're going to be trying to build on top of, because most of the most salvage yards had oil and all kinds of residue on top of that.
Batteries.
And so then if you get into a reclaiming thing where you have to start digging thirty feet deep to get to the bottom of that. It might not be, he might have the biggest lake on top of the hill that there ever was, you know, so. There's way more issues to that, but I I still feel that it's it's going against the comprehensive plan for one thing because you're trying to create a district in amongst something where you're not compatible. And I think that the opportunity with that lot is still there to be able to build a residence and sell it as that as long as they have to deal with all the cleanup or whatever else has to be done with that property. Whoever buys it is will have to be surely buyer beware because they'll have to know that coming into purchasing if that's their responsibility and so.
I agree. All right. Be ready to move on to the Platts?
Yep.
All right, first plat plat of Lot thirty-two in Bay Cliff Estates located in the west half of the south. Twelve point nine one acres of the south half of the southwest quarter, southwest quarter of Section seven and in the west half of the west half of Section eighteen, lying north of Highway fifty-two, except platted areas known as Tramp Seventh Edition and except lots one and two of parcel A and further accepting parcels B, B and C, McVeigh Edition, all being in Track ninety-four, ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM, Yankee County, South Dakota. Is there anything abnormal with these Platts or anything?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Brokow, vote, I guess.
Barkle?
Yes.
Hevly?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Okay, and then we have lots one, two, three, four, and five law overlook. Flat of lots one, two, three, four, and five of Track B law overlooks subdivision in the northeast quarter of Section eighteen. T ninety-three north, R fifty-six west of Fifth PM, Yankee County, South Dakota.
Who will have the plat?
Second it.
Motion and second. Vote when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Hevly?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
All right, is there any public comments? See anybody?
The public, well.
I have two signed up for public comment. I believe we heard from both of these already though and earlier. So I will close public comments. Any answers, nobody here. Move on to Article Five, Discussion and Definitions.
Okay, I suggest that we go back to the proposal by sharing for the animal units being Class A, ten thousand to five hundred animal units and then four ninety-nine to one hundred Class B.
Do you have a play page area? I'd first see that you're in.
Um, I just saw the front of the draft of definitions and then I sort of like the next page. Or the thing that was sent to us in the packet.
Is that on page two?
Yeah, page two.
Page two?
Where it's talking about animal units in
Oh, it's just the two classes?
Yeah.
Okay.
So on the class sizes, you're proposing we go from something other than two classes with those numbers up to more classes or just change the numbers? Or what are you suggesting?
Just leave it the way that they had it when they proposed it to us, a Class A at ten thousand to five hundred.
Five hundred to ten thousand.
Five hundred to ten thousand and then one hundred to four ninety-nine. Basically, the one hundred forty-nine, four ninety-nine covers the the small operations and then five hundred to ten thousand are the larger operations. Because we had a lot of people that were complaining about the smaller operations and then there were other people that just wanted to have a few animals for four H and so that's why we dropped it down to a hundred because there aren't very many people in four H that are going to do a hundred animal units. So if you got a hundred animal units, you're you're a farmer.
I guess one of the questions that I've had is if you have ten thousand and above, if you have ten thousand and one.
Well, you you can't have ten thousand and one. It's not allowed. Ten thousand is the cap.
Why is that?
Because that's our ordinance.
We're talking about adjusting the Article Five.
Yeah, well, I I don't think that anybody wants more than ten thousand animal units in the general community. I think that was that was established a long time ago and set in stone. They do not want more than that. As a matter of fact, neighboring counties have five thousand as their cap. And we've got twice that.
Are there any locations in the county where you could have that many?
Very damn few.
Have we ever even seen an application for anything close to ten thousand?
No.
I think we've had consideration of a dairy that was interested in coming that would have exceeded that.
Would have exceeded ten thousand?
But when the dairy came, they also said that there wasn't a processing plant close enough to them.
That has nothing to do with them wanting to put a dairy up other than trucking. Modern production agriculture is growing in size and and whether we like it or not, the profitability of of the small operations raising twenty-five or thirty dairy cows or a hundred sow is no longer is no longer desired by the farmers.
Right, but the people the people of Yankee County don't want the large
They're forced for, they're in an ag-zoned area and they're forced for economic reasons to increase the size of their operations, the size of their profitability of their enterprises. And that that's obvious all over the United States, every place.
Yes, I understand that, Don, but we also live in a county that is second only to the Black Hills for tourism. So we also have that aspect to our economy and we have a lot of other things to offer other than large animal feeding operations. And it has been voted down time And it has been voted down time and time again by the citizens of Yankton County. They do not want the largest
Tell me.
And the large feeding operations.
Tell me, tell me when it was voted down. The only time that I can think of a vote that voted it down is when Mighty Feedlot tried to set up their feed out of north of Utica.
That's right.
Is there more?
Well, when they had the first public meeting over there in the, in the the building over there by the high school. And they asked people if they wanted larger feeding operations, it was three to one against the big operations. You're talking about corporate agriculture.
So we all know how those numbers get established.
They asked the people that came to the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And who comes to the meetings?
The people that have concerns about it.
Well, the fact is, is that the farmers have a right, a right to farm. And the size of the.
The farmers have a right to affect the property that they are on.
To do what?
When you get up above ten thousand animal units, you are affecting properties way outside the property that you own.
How can you say that?
How can I say that? Because the wind blows and people that live close to large animal feeding operations have more health risks than people who do not.
And that's.
And they are also known to pollute the water and the air. And they affect larger segments of land than the land that they occupy.
It's all bars.
It's been documented. Look at.
Oh, sure, it's been documented. It's been documented on both sides of the issue, both sides.
It comes down to that we're talking about an ag zone district that's specifically set aside for agricultural use, not residential use.
And it has been working for twenty years at ten thousand per cap.
And like was stated, everything continually changes and I don't think that setting a number arbitrarily to outlaw anything over ten thousand would be a good idea looking forward as technology changes, as farm changes. You could easily see in the future larger operations that do a better job than current technology and they're able to accommodate larger numbers. I don't think we should lock that out just based on a feeling right now.
Well, when those technologies are developed, we can revisit it.
I don't think it needs to be.
We're having trouble getting people to employ the technology that we already have. They don't want to put on biofilters.
That's not true. Every, every one of the hog, hog sites were built according to modern technology. Every one of.
Refused to put in biofilters and they did not employ electrostatic.
Was that in the ordinance that they had to do that?
No, it isn't.
No, it isn't.
But I'm just saying, you say.
Exactly right, it isn't in the ordinance.
You say that yes, there are these technologies available and there, there are. But the fact of the matter is when you go to build it, they won't use it.
Fact of the matter is, when I called SDSU and talked about biofilters, they essentially said they're worthless.
They're not worthless if they're maintained and used properly.
That's your opinion and mine, mine's mine.
That's science.
With the high number, we're also making them come in for a conditional use permit, which you can set different conditions on. If you want to make conditions of using biofilters or whatever. You can do that. None of those, none of these large projects up in class A are going to go without any kind of scrutiny or any discussion.
I, I can live with ten thousand and you say you can come in for, I can live with that. I just, I, I think we're we're harnessing economic development when we limit a farmer's ability to produce.
And if we haven't had much, I guess if you can have a variance at, of over ten thousand, we haven't really had anybody want to go ten thousand or more, other than you said the one dairy. It's not so much of an issue. I don't think that it's necessary to reduce it since we haven't had that much of a problem. I think the problem mainly is at the lower end of the spectrum where we're seeing whether we need conditional use permits or anything for these other classes. If you wanted to, you're talking, making the class instead of class B starting at three hundred, you're saying one hundred.
Yeah, that was their choice, Sherry and Joe.
Listen, Chairman. We, we can discuss this all night and we'll be here at midnight still discussing that and we won't have resolved anything. I would suggest that we go on, on the article changes that we have not revised, finish that and then come back to other issues that we, we want to take a look at. Because I think it's very important that we get this article fifteen thing to article five thing. Article fifteen, that's the army, article five thing to the commission.
I would agree, Don, as far as moving on and getting where we kind of left off. I know that everything we've got is not necessarily perfect. I do know that some places in this ordinance, it says that as we, you issue conditional use permits, the boards have the op, the opportunity to look at if someone comes in and asks for a eleven thousand animal unit building, that they have the opportunity to look at that. Whether they pass it or not, that's, that's up to that particular board sitting at that time to do that. And we also, I think everybody knows by looking at the maps and stuff we have, even at the ten, you know, especially at the ten thousand number and even smaller numbers, there's very few places with the setbacks and things that we have listed in our ordinance at this point that there's very few areas that would even accommodate that much of a setback without major variances, which would bring up the public comment and public vote basically to get it done. So I would like to agree in the fact that let's, let's move on from where we stopped and try to, you know, hammer that stuff out and then come back. If there's questions about it and come back to it, you know, get a final, get to a final point because what, we can argue about everything till everything freezes over.
Well, then if we move on to where we left off last time.
Um, can I just visit the definition of farm, ranch, or orchard on page five for just a moment? It says on here, an area of land not less than twenty acres or not less than eighty acres. I would suggest that we just strike those numbers, meaning that it's really not that crucial, the size of the farm, ranch, or orchard. Because somebody could have an organic farm or something like that where they wouldn't necessarily have that many acres of trees or, or whatever.
Page five.
It was just, it was just an observation. I'm not, you know, hell bent to have it changed or stricken, but to me, it just didn't really make sense to win with that. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. It's on page five.
Yep. You're talking about farm, ranch, orchard definition?
Yeah, just the definition there. You know, because we have wineries come in and they don't have twenty acres of, of grapevines by any means.
Right.
You know, and that's definitely an orchard or a, it's an agricultural enterprise, we put it that way. So I, I'm, it's just questioning whether we have to have a limit on the number of acres for someone to do that.
I suppose that the question that would come up from the farmer's side is probably the same question that came up on rezoning junkyard. The setbacks and so forth.
But if they bought a slot, a, a smaller land, a piece of land that was already platted out that wasn't meeting that standard
Oh.
For size, you know what I mean?
Yep.
A lot of record, just like we just dealt with.
And actually, for using it as cropland, there is no setbacks.
Right.
There would be no setbacks at all.
Right, it's just, you're just growing things on it.
So we would strike it basically where it says.
Just strike the twenty acres of in the first.
Yeah, of not less than twenty.
Not less than twenty acres. It ju, just would be like an area of unplanted land.
Gary, what are your thoughts?
I have no issue with that.
Good, okay.
But do you have to take out the eighty then two?
Yeah.
So you're basically an area of
An area of.
Unplotted land, which is used for growing usual farm products.
Right.
I think that's simple enough.
And then right below it, where it says of not less than eighty acres.
To read an area of unplotted land, which is used for growing usual farm products, vegetables, fruits, trees, not a real cow. But excluding an animal feeding operation. So it's strictly for raising crops.
Just for raising crops or trees. You know, for fruit trees or whatever, nut trees, who knows?
Everybody good with that?
Yep. We're in fourteen.
All right, I think we left off page fourteen, no, page page fifteen, I think, weren't we?
Yeah, I think we talked about growing marijuana in a traffic visibility area.
I think though, I'd like to go back to because Sherry had, when she sent that letter out when she had to be going before we, and we didn't have that meeting anyway, but I agree with what she had in the section five sixteen, the title of that is the section five sixteen was residence and new church requirements. First off, a church is a conditional use, I think, in an ag district and then I think it should just be new residents because that's what it's basically dealing with here. And the only thing, I don't know if church got in there because of colonies, but they basically have their own little explanation down here in the five oh one nonprofit or, you know, and some of those things, but they're not actually considered a church. So I agree with what her comment was. I think that it should just read new residence requirements.
I would like to see the single family dwellings back in the permitted use and get rid of the special permitted use altogether.
Yes.
Because I looked at Bonham and Clay County are immediately adjacent to us and they both have single family dwellings as a permitted principal use in A.
And is it?
And the manufactured houses and mobile, modular houses. Just leave it the way it was.
Christie as A or a single dwelling as a permitted use?
It just says, single family, single fam, I'm on page eight. Um, section five oh three in the ag district. They proposed eliminating that and then making it a special permitted use. And I think that a home should be a permitted use and I don't think it should be a special use.
So four, nine, and ten is what you're saying?
Yeah, put those back in there. Put those back in there the way they, they were.
So you want to put single family dwellings and
Manufactured homes and modular homes.
Manufactured or modular homes.
As a permitted principal use in the egg zone, the way it has been since we started this whole thing. And the way it is in the neighboring counties.
Yes, I think.
And you're allowed to live in the country. It's an allowable use.
I think that as a permitted, special permitted use, it is still allowable, subject to conditions, which is a lower bar to meet than our other zone districts like Lakeside Commercial and Commercial where a single family residence would be a conditional use and have to go through a conditional use process where special permitted use, it's a lower bar to meet, but we have basically same type of district. You have commercial enterprises happening in an ag zone district, just their agricultural enterprises, no different than a commercial district. We have manufacturing or whatever going on, same with Lakeside Commercial where you have different types of businesses going on and those are conditional uses for residents to be in. And I think that it makes it more consistent to not just have residential, basically making the ag zone another residentially zoned district. Because if you look at all of our requirements and setbacks, it's basically everything to confine ag uses in an ag zone district and confer all the rights, all the privileges, all the preference onto residences in an ag zone district. So if we want to leave it in a permitted use and keep it all the same way, we should just rename Ag Zone to R four.
We've always had single family dwellings in A. That's the way Yankton County is.
And this is not changing that. It's leaving it the same.
It's leaving it the same. That's what I said, leave it where it was.
If you leave, if you put it as a special permitted use, it's not prohibiting residences and.
Then why change it? If it doesn't change anything, why change it?
Because this way we have the ability to set different different restrictions or different requirements on new residences in an ag zone district, which residences in an ag zone district are not necessarily compatible with agribusiness.
Well, and I think too, Chris, that the reason it was moved to special permitted uses was because when we got to the new article that I was just talking about, which is section five sixteen, the residence requirements. Single family dwellings that are out there today prior to passage of this, these changes are fine. There's nothing we can do about that.
Right, they're not affected by.
But once this becomes the new ordinance, then okay, you want to build a house out in the country, that's fine on an acreage, as long as you meet the space requirements. But here, this is where it comes into the notices, you know, the, which, where you can build, you know, all that stuff that was set up in this section five sixteen. That's why I believe that it was put into the special permitted uses so that it brought light to that other section that, okay, you can build there, but you got to do this.
Right.
Well, I have a problem with the permitted special uses because you're, you're just granting them a permit for, for something like an animal feeding operation without the, the neighbors even being notified that this is coming in next to them. And they don't get a hearing, they don't get any input. So why shouldn't the neighbors know what's going on next to them? So you're saying that the farmer gets notified if
In an ag district.
Right, if somebody's coming in next to them, but the same token, the same courtesy is not allowed to the neighbors if somebody wants to put an animal feeding operation next to their home. They don't even get a notice that this is going to happen.
No, but if they were there first, yes. They still get a notice because if they're going to, if they're going to build something.
No, they're not.
It, it doesn't say that.
No, it doesn't say that.
There's nothing about who was there first.
I'm going to go back to my original point. If we don't move on to the
Yeah, exactly.
Do the rest of the article five, we'll argue about this stuff forever.
Well, this is what we're, we're talking about right now.
We talked about it very, the same issues a month ago. We tried to have two meetings to address this in, in the last month and they were both canceled. We need to move on with this, so let's.
Well, we need to go through this because that's the purpose of this meeting.
Once, it's already been gone through. Let's get on and get it.
I agree, we should move on through the rest of it and then once we get through. I agree, we should move on through the rest of it and then once we get through that, we'll come back. To the contentious points, let's train, hammer out the other things and the rest of it before we start rehashing things. Where we left off was.
Was to start on five nineteen.
Yes, where we left off, page fifteen on section five nineteen.
Okay, we had two, um. Requests for variances because of the setbacks in A. Section five fifteen minimum yard requirements, I looked up what was in Union County, Clay County. And Bonham County. In Union County, their minimum acre requirement is two and a half acres for residents and Clay, it's two acres. And as far as, as far as yard requirements setbacks, in Clay, it's, the rear yard is fifty, the side yard is thirty. And the front, frontage was two hundred, I believe.
Christie, I think, said we're gonna start on section five nineteen and then we'll go back after we get through that.
Alright. Um, section five nineteen, one B, the facility management plan, I would just like to make a request. For the, the dead animal disposal area, that they make that like, um, a chain link or something with a gate of some sort, just so that the animals, the. The dogs and the coyotes can't drag the dead animals all over.
So we'd add that to.
Just.
Section, it'd be one B.
One B one, you know, if they could just have like a chain link area, just so that they're, the neighbors' dogs and dragging the dead animals all over, coyotes or whatever.
Should we just say temporary dead animal storage or disposal sites shall be screened and secured?
Well, if you say fence, they can just put up a barbed wire fence and that's not gonna stop anything.
Chain link.
Chain link would do it.
Chain link and let's put it behind the facility.
That would be great.
Well, that becomes an issue as far as chain link because you can see it, see through it.
Well, you can put those little strips through it.
The purpose of the, of the.
With the screening.
Animal is to have screening so you can't see through it. And the other thing is the truck that comes in there to pick them up has to be able to get to it.
Gary?
Shall be a screen chain link fence?
Yeah.
But trucks do have to be able to get to it.
Well, yeah, but you can have a big chain link gate.
But it doesn't need to be right on the edge of the ditch.
I agree.
It should be far enough from the road that it isn't smacking you in the face when you drive by.
Well, it already says out of sight from neighboring dwellings and adjacent right away.
But that hasn't been followed.
So what are you proposing?
No, we're just proposing to do this so then it won't be an issue, is all we're saying.
Yeah.
I know, but I mean, what change do you, you want to add to it?
Supreme chain link fence.
Gary got it.
Yep.
Gary will do it.
And, and there already is some kind of a setback from the road, right? That needs to be enforced.
Yeah, there is a setback from the road, um.
Well, for, for the dead pile. Right next to the ditch is not a good place. We didn't establish a setback yet for incorporated or unincorporated. Nonsities.
Okay, so before we move on to that, section five nineteen, uh, number one, everybody's good with the rest of what that says? That includes one, A, B, C?
Well, the only, the only thing I'd say, uh. In, uh, I guess it's four. B, B four. Uh, a review of industry best management practices including the use of biofilters, pit additives, urine feces, separation systems, order, reduction technologies. That doesn't say much, i- if, if we want them to have those things, we probably need to identify those things. I, I, it's just my thought. This is, this kinda says. So I, I went and reviewed it. I'm, I'm, I'm done with it, it's over, the review is everything.
Yeah.
But I didn't do anything.
Instead of applicant shall identify which practices will be utilized, um, maybe it should be the planning board. Shall identify which practices, but then as a conditional use permit, you're allowed to put conditions on it, so.
If they have to review it, does that mean that they have to present each thing like, yeah, I looked at this. Pit additive, additive, I looked at this biofilter and then present that to us as that.
Well, one of the, one of the problems I think you have with, with, uh, enforcement of, uh, like this is that. Uh, I guess I don't know of any, uh, livestock producer, uh, that has a confinement facility that's gonna let anybody come in and check and see if. You're doing things exactly as, as, uh, you were supposed to be doing.
Lot of these units though, Don, have, especially all, pretty much all the new stuff is managed by a management company. I mean, yeah, I own it, but, and I probably do the work in it, but I have a team of professionals actually that come in and.
Oh, yeah.
They, you know, make sure that everything is being fed right and you're, everything is working.
They chew you out if your.
Yeah.
Death loss higher than.
They always say that the, they, they pitch you against the guys, you know, you're, you're in a group and, and they pitch you against the other ones, everybody's trying to be the best. So that makes you better. But the issue with your. The review of it, you know, just like you said, the best management practices, yeah, I can say I'm gonna do it, but will I? So then, and I don't think that the planning commission has the expertise to determine what's best. What I think that you might look at is if they have a. Performance standard with the company that they're producing for. They would be the ones that.
Yeah, but that's a vested interest.
Or something like that, I don't know.
That's a vested interest too. It's not like an independent party.
I don't know, it's, it's.
But maybe you could just add on to the end of that sentence, it said applicant will identify which practices will be utilized, subject to approval by the planning commission. Does that sound acceptable or?
Yeah, I don't, I, my, my fear is, is who's the expert? Of what's, what's going on, so. Would you, what were your thoughts, Don, on?
Well, I just, I just see it as a, as a kind of a do nothing paragraph because it's sitting there, but.
It, it's not.
It doesn't have any enforcement, it doesn't have any.
Teeth.
Teeth in it at all.
I don't have a, a, a great opinion, Gary?
No, I, I kinda like that idea, you, you could add this subject to approval, planning to, there's a, and, and I know we're not all experts, but. But if it sounds reasonable, makes sense, I think that would be, uh, good addition.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I understand what you're saying, but it's, it's, it's an area where, you know, Christie got information from. Bookings about biofilters, I got information for bookings and biofilters and they're, they're both a, a different story and, uh. You know, uh, pit additives, I think most of the people, I, I, we're talking mainly about, uh. Hogs, and I think most of the hog users are using pit additives. And, and the problem is, Dennis, is there a way you can check? Will you take a sample of manure and check to see if pit additives are in there?
I don't know that they can, you know, most of that is a yeast kind of product or, you know, biological product, whether it shows up in there or not, I don't know, but. In a test of any sort. You see their rec, see their receipts from where they bought it. You know, that might, that might tell you if they are using it, cause they're.
If they can show proof that they purchased it.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Some proof anyway.
That's all I have.
Oh, um, down here. On, uh, C, wait, under waste management plan requirements, um, we've got, uh. A one and a two, and then there's a one, two, three, four, under the state general permit, uh, if any of the situation event. Um, it talks about in that number four, the proposed site is located over a mapped shallow aquifer area as depicted on the Department of Environment and National. Natural Resources, first occurrence of aquifer materials on Yankton County, I just wanted to, um, suggest that you include a map or attachment. To that. You know, I know right now it's on the website. But maybe when they're going through the application process, if they could, if there was an attachment there, they could click on and then they could view that map.
An attachment on like the county website that they could view that map?
Yeah. Or they could include the map maybe in their application. You know, just so that it was easy for them to access it. I've seen that map before, I know, I know, you know, that you can, you can get it on your computer and you can blow it up if you got a nice big.
To show where the shallow aquifers are, that's what they're talking about.
Yeah. But it just might make it more user friendly if there was a link someplace to that.
Gary, is that something we can add to the county planning and zoning or website or?
There's a link on there somewhere.
Actually, you can find it through the state.
Or is it, maybe, was it in the drainage part, there's a link someplace, but I don't remember.
State sites and I think.
Or maybe just a link through the D M.
It'll show you where the, cause that, if you're digging a well, you can go and, I can go on it and find where the, where the water is and I don't know, it'll tell you kinda where the, what the depth is on it, you know, if you're putting irrigation wells and stuff.
You gotta work for G I S, U S G I.
Add the state link at the end of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, a hot link or something.
It's probably best to know that before you. Don't turn the water on your pistol in the park, if you were over a shallow aquifer.
Someplace in D or, D or maybe E, I'm not sure, but watch probably D, under, under that same number one. Prior to construction, I, I, I think, I think we need to agree on a description of what is the start of construction. And it needs to be in there someplace.
Gary, would that be something you add to the definitions?
Yes, and.
Doesn't the state have a definition?
Put that in a bill last year?
We need to have it in there, I, I, we don't need to look for it now, just know that we have to have it in there.
Yeah, got it.
And it can be, it just needs to be a definite. And I think with that, probably in that same paragraph, we, we need to tell them if they haven't started construction and they want to continue in their. With their building permit, uh, or, or their pro, uh, their program, they need to come in and get renewed. Just, just ignoring it doesn't, doesn't solve anybody's problems. We need to tell them exactly what they need to do. You know, I, out in the edge.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
You're talking as far as if.
You're making them operate for rules that they don't even know or understand, so they have to know, you don't have to tell them.
But it should be presented to them at the time that they come in and apply for the first.
Yes, correct.
You know, basically their, their worksheet that they go home with, that, that, okay, for, for whatever reason that you. Actual, you know, whatever you determine actual construction hasn't started by. The time of your, your hundred and eighty days of your permit.
It's their responsibility.
You need to come in and, you know, and I know the discussion back when we were fighting all about all this was that. We don't have the authority to grant extensions. So.
So they just reapply.
So, yeah, so they reapply and I, just we were looking at, you know, when the, when the building permits based on. Dollar value and what it costs. You know, it's, it's a little bit, in my mind, like.
But you could waive that.
Pardon me?
You could waive that, we've done that before.
That's what I'm wondering though, if that, you know, because if it, if it's a weather event or if it's something else that happens.
Death in the family or whatever.
Can it be, yeah, death or something, you know, or injury or whatever.
Reapply and waive the fee.
Mm-hmm. Waive the fee. Cause we've done that for people.
Unless they make changes, then they have to waive.
Right, if they make changes.
Well, see, that's what I'm.
You have to change another article outside article five.
We can do that, we gotta do what's right.
Well, we'll get to that at some point when you get back to nonconformance or whatever, when we get that far, but. I don't know that, but, but that would be basically any, any building permit that was issued, no matter if it was a.
Yeah, help, help me, uh, uh, understand where we can't, uh, grant an extension.
It's not in the ordinance.
It was never said.
It was never in the ordinance.
Okay, but is that something that we need to address in the ordinance?
That's what I'm asking.
Well, they just, they, they reapply, yeah.
Is it possible to add an extension in the ordinance if we're gonna change stuff anyway? I mean, adding an extension.
But it almost has to be a blanket one because if you have people building a house or building a commercial building or something on the same issue.
Yeah, because that problem was not in the past, abandoned projects and all kinds of bad stuff.
I think they're worried if they add other articles to it, that they're all gonna be affected.
Yeah.
That's the concern.
Yeah, I remember that Mr. Gold.
Golden?
Golden, yeah, he was gonna bid, build a big fish farm and all of that stuff and.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had a lot of things go by the wayside and just get abandoned, so that's, that was the reason they didn't wanna do the extension.
Well, as far as these, these situations with the contracts and building these kind of ag facilities, yeah, you're not gonna have an abandoned project, it's gonna be something. Out of their control that sets it back, but, um. If you've made like an extension process where they had to apply for their extension, does that clear it up? You don't just give an automatic extension, but.
Right, they're supposed to come back in and, and re, right now it is, they just come back and reapply and say, okay, you know, this happened, that happened.
They should have.
Please let re, reapply for my same thing, nothing's changed or whatever.
They should still pay the fees though.
Right, but you can waive it.
Yeah. I don't know.
Cause I know we've done that for somebody, I don't remember what the circumstances are, but I know that we have waived fees for people before. And, and some, but anyways, um. The next paragraph, E, it says, uh, Yankton County Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment or Planning Director. May require additional information and I would like to add or. may require additional information and I would like to add or conditions reasonably related to, um, CAPOs not contained in these regulations comma in order to promote for the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of Yankton County.
Under the Waste Management Plan?
Yep. Yep, under Waste Management.
Well, that's kind of what our comprehensive plan says, isn't it, overall? I mean, we, we're just...
Well, we just add that in there or conditions in order to promote the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of Yankton County.
And that's the gist of our comprehensive plan, is that we, we need to for the welfare of the people. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, and so we are at the facility setback chart and we do not have a distance for incorporated municipalities for A or B.
Now, before we do that, earlier last time, I think we got rid of,
Oh, manure.
We got rid of all the different manure classifications to simplify it, and basically the only thing liquid manure was used for is basically if you have liquid manure, it automatically throws you into COP instead of special permitted use. So we can basically just strike the all the different manure systems and just work off of the first one. Is what I would suggest, so we don't have to go through...
Unless...
That's a lot of repeats for each, each different manure system. We're not utilizing the manure systems other than the liquid to make COPs.
Is that gonna make Joe upset if we change his manure system categories? I'm just asking.
It's a good question.
I'm just asking.
He's pretty sold on it.
So...
I mean, I think we all agreed that it was a good idea to make it, if liquid manure was involved, then it is a COP automatically. That's in the definitions. And other than that, we don't need to muddy the waters with all these different manure classifications.
I'd agree. Biggest thing I think that we basically need to look at is the incorporated and the municipality thing as far as setbacks on the bigger, on the Class A. And I guess we haven't got a, you know, I don't know...
Because we don't have a distance on it.
You know, most of them are minimum of thirteen twenty, but then you get, you know, depending upon where you are, I guess that's, I don't know that that's the, the answer.
Well, I think right now it's at two miles for an incorporated municipality, isn't it? For the larger, for the larger operation.
I guess my suggestion is do they know what their ratios are in regards to putting rid of systems? But I would still maybe put in what you think might be a reasonable number, and either way.
You wanna pass one of those down, Chrissy? Pass one of them, Doug.
Oh, on time.
Um, this is just a summation of what our current ordinance is and then what's on this proposal, which I guess we just talked about, striking out the different manure systems, so we can just basically cross out the last two columns on there, but, um, currently we got the different class sizes, and then we've got the setback item, and I've got those listed out, that follows our current ordinance, not what we're talking about for proposals, that's what our current is. And then it has the different classes in the class column, and then what the setback distance is right now. And then, yeah, and then the proposed under... Oh, yeah, sorry, here.
Here.
Gary. And then, under the proposed distance column, that would match up to the first one here on Joe's system, but, um, so if we look at like Class One municipalities, right now we've got four miles on Class A, two miles Class B, one mile Class C, Class D is half mile, Class E is half mile, and F is none. And then I guess I've got in the proposed one, to be determined, because that's what's on our proposal here.
I'd prefer Class Two and Three to be equal to what is above. I don't care if they're incorporated or not. I would rather see them at four miles than two miles. Otherwise, you stymie their growth. They can't expand.
What's that now?
I would say I would like to see them have more area. So moving the, uh, distance to four miles for Class Two and Three municipalities, regardless if they're incorporated or not. Give them flexibility to grow outward.
You know how many sections of ground four miles takes around a...
Mm-hmm. No, no, I'd be willing to go to two, honestly I would, but I'd like it to at least be considered for four.
Four miles?
I would, you're giving it to the lake.
That's a different zoned area.
Yeah, but that land isn't gonna...
Zone differently.
True, but I think you would have more issues there than you would out into the regular areas, but whatever.
Four miles. Isn't it twenty or thirty or forty sections? Four miles around Utica?
We could compromise and do three. Yankton has an ETG, ETJ of three miles. I don't mind doing that. Two or three, I'd be fine with that, but... What is there's the board won't?
I think if we're really restricting, uh, farmers' rights to operate their farms doing that.
Yeah, I, I'd be fine with two, honestly, but I think you do have to give municipalities some space to grow and the opportunities to grow, and I'm, I'm fine with that. Give them some space.
Maybe setbacks, even if something was located at whatever, a mile or two miles, that doesn't prevent the municipality from growing out towards the current facilities, no matter what we set, make the setback.
Hold on, I gotta think of that.
If there was a new facility built, say like right now under the current ordinance, it's half mile from Class Two, Class Three. If a new facility, new barn or whatever gets built, a half mile from one of these municipalities, it doesn't prevent the municipality from growing out towards that operation. All this setback is doing is stopping anybody from getting any closer to that municipality.
Right. Yeah, I just don't want them any closer than, I know this says a half mile, I'd be willing to go to two miles or one mile, I just, I think municipalities, there's going to be more people. There's more opportunity for growth in small towns. But right now, for example, Utica is hammed by farmland, and that's fine. But there are also big lots and people eventually are going to age out of wanting to do, have big farms. And so, I would like them to turn to a municipality first and say, we have some land, we should be interested in deeding it. If they had someone actually do that, do you want this piece of land? Well, we didn't because, for different reasons, but I, I still, I think, if, I'd still like to have a little flexible on growth, honestly. I'm not willing to hammed farmers, I, I bring them close, that's fine, but just, I need a little bit of space. So would you be all right with two miles and then like half a mile or one mile for the B? I would consider... Because B is only five hundred animal units, but... Is it? Okay. Let me think of where that was at, hold on. I would take a half mile. A half mile for the, for the, for the B, yeah. Right. I'm just trying to, to think around what I've got around me. Half mile or, or, or a mile for the B? Half mile to a mile, I'm fine with either.
Help me, what are we now? What is it now?
Half mile.
Half mile, yeah. Incorporated or nonincorporated? Because sometimes towns fail too, so, and disappear.
I don't see how, I guess I'm having a hard time seeing how a half mile setback for a new agricultural facility prevents the growth of small town.
Well, because people don't like to live next to a hog confinement. And if you wanna promote growth, you should be promoting growth of a small town as well. Because you're telling people you don't want the, the residences out in the country, well then, they could live in a small town and still be close to the country. A small town has a different feel than living in the town of Yankton. You know, from teaching in two very small towns, I understand that. It's a very, it's, they have a very strong sense of community, small towns do. So, I mean, there's economic growth on both sides, so.
And with, you know, the housing being the way it is in Yankton...
It's expensive, so you can go to a small town.
We need people to consider going out to the small towns.
Oh, we have still to do.
Yeah.
That's why APGs is one of their...
You know, because you can buy a house in a small town, a really nice house, a lot cheaper than you can buy inside the city, you know. I think there's a way to have new farm products and small town growth that they can work hand in hand. And so if we can find that compromise, we have to look at it.
So on the, say on page seventeen, we have the facility setback chart. Under the first one, if you struck incorporated for municipalities, just made it municipalities.
Correct, yes.
And then on the Class A, Class B, B remaining at what currently is half mile.
Correct.
Twenty-six forty. In Class A...
Well, I'd like a little bit more room there, but... Class A one-two? For that, two miles? Maybe a...
And then are we going with a feet per animal unit calculation or a straight number?
I think you'd stay with the feet per animal unit, just to make it consistent within this chart.
I think it's a lot, I guess...
I think it's probably easier to do it the other way, though, honestly.
I think it'd be a lot easier to say thirteen hundred and twenty feet instead of taking...
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd rather have a foot delineation, not an annuity of delineation, just for the simple fact that it's more easier to understand them.
Sure.
You don't have to comp that all. And then, depending on what they are.
You're saying a one point nine eight, you wanna change to this thirteen one?
Hmm? No, not thirteen twenty, that's only a quarter mile. You're talking about the municipalities, right? Still, aren't we?
A mile, a half mile, I got that.
Yep.
Municipalities, but what are we talking about?
Well, that's, that's already in there, that's the, the foot mark.
Yeah, those don't change.
Yeah.
Thirty, minimum of thirteen twenty.
Everything south of that semi solid is strictly the next stuff.
I guess I have a problem with the two miles for municipalities if it's going to be where a class as wide as five hundred to ten thousand.
Is that not enough or is that too far in your opinion?
I think that two miles might be appropriate for
I'd say.
several thousand, but for five hundred, I don't think it's appropriate.
Is that where the animal unit calculation comes in then, Chris?
I guess that's, that's probably what the rationale was for.
Use the, use the animal unit based on the amount of animal units in the calculation instead of distance three. I'd, I'd agree with that. Because then, like you say, because it's more important to be at the setback larger for the larger number than it is for that, and you have a place to calculate it that way by that. Biggest thing I think is how, what number are we gonna use if, if we're delineating or deleting, uh, all the manure systems, Joe's manure systems? What number are we gonna use just strictly the liquid manure system?
Yeah.
Well, where I, I gave you the sheet and I put the range on the different current classes that we have. And as you can see, even the solid manure system, which has the lowest feet per animal unit, is substantially more restrictive than current ordinance. So I guess I would, I would rather see a lower feet per animal unit on if we said like the one point nine eight on the solid, I think is already, that's starting out baseline quite a bit more restrictive than...
But it's not at the upper levels. It's less restrictive at the upper levels.
At the upper levels for...
Animal units.
Animal units for a Class A, the largest, yeah, would be three point seven five, and the lowest of five thousand would be one point eight eight miles, so you would have, at five thousand, you'd have close to your two miles, which is right now, from a, well, I guess from municipality, is slightly different than the residential where I got the calculation here, but... So if we set a different feet per animal unit for municipalities versus...
Why is the, um, under property line, why is that reduced way down to seventy-five feet when it was six hundred and sixty feet?
Which one you talking about?
I'm talking about new CAPOs, APOs and waste facilities. The setbacks from a property line has always been six hundred and sixty feet, and you're dropping it down to seventy-five?
No, that's for Class F. Um, you're talking on my sheet here?
Yeah.
Yeah, on, that's...
You've got seventy-five all the way across.
Because that's what the proposed is in this proposal. Because it doesn't set that requirement.
Well, we don't have a Class F.
I put the current classes, and then I put what, if you applied those current classes to the new proposal, what it would translate to for the actual setbacks. So you're comparing apples to apples. This is for comparison purposes. I just put down the calculation of what it would be if we applied these classes or that animal unit size in the new proposal here. And what that would actually calculate out to.
Are you proposing to change the property line setback from six hundred and sixty feet down to seventy-five feet?
I am not. That's what is written in this current proposal.
I don't remember seeing that change. I, I propose that the setbacks remain the way they were when it comes to property lines and right-of-way lines in the ordinance as it was before. Because that's a huge... Because that's a huge change.
Sorry, Christie, I see where I missed that, in Joe's system, it says any style manure system, property line is six sixty.
Okay. And the right-of-way line is the same as well, for three thirty.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I got a little excited.
Couldn't tell.
Couldn't tell.
So to finish up my other question, do you right-of-ways include dishes or do they just start at the property line for the owner? Or is there a difference? Every place is different, like in.
As far as where does the right-of-way start?
Where does it start?
Here, it starts at the fence line, right? Or property line.
Right, okay, that's why I was just, I needed to clarify that.
Thirty-two feet from the center of the road.
Depending on the road, yes.
Thirty-three is a.
Yeah, the road's. In the proper place, which they are always.
Gary, how often do they update the hundred-year floodplain?
Actually, we're going through that process right now. It varies, I mean, it's been, since two thousand and ten was the last adoption, so that can be done.
Yeah.
Not very often, but we are in process right now, they're looking to start pretty soon, hopefully this summer, maybe fall at the latest. And then it would go into effect a year after that, so we'll see.
You can get an idea of where it is, I don't know exactly how accurate it is, but if you go to Realtor dot com. And just find any piece of real estate in your county. And then there's a spot you can click on that'll show you what flood zone it is.
Yeah.
You click on that and then you can navigate to anywhere you wanna go.
Yeah, Beacon, our Beacon system already shows the flood zones toward us also, so. But, yeah, there's a variety of sites, FEMA has a site too, you can just take the address and bring up the zone.
And I could never get the FEMA site to work.
I'll, I'll send you the link, it's really easy.
The, the floodplain is proposed. Is significantly larger than previous, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it becomes very cumbersome.
So on the municipalities, again, if we go to the feet per animal unit, if you use two point two feet from, per animal unit from municipalities. If you go up to our current, current class sizes, not the proposed, but and go at the lower end at the five thousand, that would give you your two miles. And then larger would be larger.
I, I would be fine with that.
And then if you put a minimum quarter mile.
I thought we were at a minimum for a half mile for a municipality.
Yeah, half mile.
Right.
We got right now.
Oh, there you go. The two, twenty-six forty.
Yeah, cause we got a half mile right now for the minimum.
For class. For all classes or for just class A or class B?
Or B.
For B.
For B, yeah, twenty-six four, twenty-four sixty is what we said.
Twenty-four sixty, yeah.
It's twenty-six forty, isn't it? It's five thousand.
Twenty-six forty, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-six forty.
Had the right numbers, just in the wrong sequence.
Okay, there was one part in, um, on page nineteen that got skipped when they're going through the manure application process. Um, when they were, you know, uh, going through this and, and copying and pasting, they forgot a spot.
Residents.
Uh, we need to reinsert section five nineteen, section ten-four, it has to do with notification. And I'm sure it was probably just an or, oversight. Because that's always been a part of our, um, ordinances to notify people when they're going to spread manure. And it's pretty, it's pretty open as far as, you know, um, they don't have to give you the exact date and time, but they should give you a warning. So the, oh, the part that we needed to leave in is on page twenty-two H. It says the notification section should be formulated by applicant. It includes names, addresses. And phone numbers of all occupied residences and public gathering places. So if you're gonna have a graduation party for your kid, they don't decide to spread manure on that day. It's just basically being a good neighbor and letting them know. Within, you know, a reasonable timeframe, when they're planning to spread manure, if you're planning to have a barbecue or a family reunion or something, you pick another day. So that section H on page twenty-two would just need to be reinserted.
I have a problem with that because just the nature of doing it, you don't always know an exact time of when you're going to do it and.
All you have to do is pick up a phone.
I think that the burden of that should be on rural residents that think that they wanna do something, maybe they should call up their neighbors and say, hey, we're gonna. Have a gathering or whatever, we wanna know if you're planning on doing anything, we'd appreciate it if you avoided that weekend or whatever, rather than.
The notice has always been in there, that's, you know, part of.
But we're also working on changing this and streamlining it.
Well, that doesn't mean that they're absolved the responsibility. And I think since it wasn't even mentioned at all in there, they probably just forgot to copy and paste that section.
Well, I can tell you from. My own proposal that I put together, which was considered with this, I purposely did not put that in there for that reason. So it wasn't an oversight on my part.
So you don't think you should have to tell your neighbors when you're doing that?
No.
You don't think that that's a common courtesy to do that?
No, I think that if the neighbors have a problem and have a specific weekend, they should be contacting me since I was there first.
You don't know you were there first. You're making an assumption.
I think that being in an ag zone with these kind of processes happening, you can't tell everybody, every little thing, otherwise I'd never get off the phone during the day. And I think that it's not that big of a burden for the rural resident, if they want a specific weekend to do something or whatever the case may be, to call up their neighbors.
So you want me calling you every weekend saying I'm gonna have people over and we're gonna be, you know, grilling outside?
And if it's a thing where you're going to be grilling every weekend and that I'm not allowed to basically apply manure any weekend.
We're not saying you'd never be able to do it. It's, it's always been a part of the ordinance and I don't think it's necessary to delete it.
Gary, what, what's, what kinda, what's the standard across the state of that notification?
That's pretty standard, the way we have it currently, that you go to two plus exactly.
In that way, if you tell the people we're gonna be applying manure in this. Range of time, then people can make other plans.
I think you should issue every farmer a flagpole with a red flag and when I gotta haul manure, I'm gonna raise a red flag and you guys figure it out.
I don't know, I've ever had a neighbor call us to tell us there was spread manure. Okay, go have fun, what am I gonna say to that?
Well.
That, I've never had anybody call either.
I agree, I know from Chris's standpoint too, I mean, I agree because you don't know when you're gonna do it because.
The thing that happens.
We always did it at home on Saturdays and Sundays when the kids come, we're off for school and you had extra track for help.
It happens in between different processes when you have time, it's not a scheduled thing.
Yeah, it's a sunshine, let's go.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, this is, this is a hard area. Because common sense and good neighbors, I think, says you're gonna notify, there's gonna be notification, now, whatever way it goes, I don't know, but. I guess I, I see the point about. If, if everybody within a mile or two, uh, range of your facility has to call you every time they want to have an event. It's gonna get pretty time consuming. Would there be a simpler thing as a, a one-week, uh, internet. Message, uh, to all the neighbors? You don't have to call them, you, you just have to prove that you sent a, an email telling people the date that you're gonna plan on doing it within two or three days.
That's what it says right now. It says right now, annual notifications of advising of an upcoming thirty-day window should be given. And if you don't do that and you're really obnoxious about it, like you're spreading manure on Mother's Day or something like that, or the Fourth of July, when you know people are gonna be out. Or during graduation weekend, you know, because it's pretty well-known in the paper when people are graduating. Then they can enforce up to a forty-eight hour notice. But basically, you know, I plan on, generally I spread manure in April or whatever. Or, and then if they have something going on in April, then you can figure that out.
Well, the confinement facilities, uh, generally, uh, I think generally, Dennis, you help me out here, would generally do it, uh, when they can get access to the field.
Yeah.
Right, when they, when it's not, you know.
Yeah. When they're not, if corn's growing or beans growing.
Not too wet, so they can get it incorporated.
Most of them don't have their own equipment.
Well, there might be more than one route too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Showing up.
Yeah.
There's always gonna be emergencies.
I think the bottom line is, yeah, we. You need the notification and, yeah, that's gonna have to be discussed at the county mission level too, but. But I agree that it's pretty hard for, for the farmers to get real specific a lot of times of when that's gonna.
And that's understandable.
But I haven't, personally, I've never had a complaint upon advance. Uh, we have had some, we did have some complaints last year, but it wasn't because of special events or anything, maybe it's. I don't have this closeness, I guess, when it occurred, but.
Well, it kinda, it's kind of a two-way street, no matter what you do, because, because I've got neighbors that come home and turn their dogs loose when the kids get out of school and their dog run over and run my cattle through the fences. But they didn't call me and tell me they're letting their dogs out. You know, so I mean, it, and it's all about being good neighbors and that is, that's tough anymore when you don't know where your neighbors are. That, in my neighborhood, you know, I mean, it's kinda like, okay, who lives there this week?
Yeah, people aren't, you know, they aren't.
And they all bring.
Their way to learn who they're making.
And they all bring their different set of problems with them when they come, because, you know, the last people that were there before the group that's there now left all the animals that they accumulated while they were there and just packed up and drove off and left the animal there. So.
You mean when they went on vacation, they didn't take care of them or they just abandoned them?
Just abandoned them.
Oh, my goodness.
So, you know. Or throw their garbage in the creek and when the water washes, it comes down through the fences and scatters all over the pasture. Fuel barrels and stuff like that, so, yeah, it's a, it's a tough, tough thing to regulate and it's a real tougher thing to enforce, so.
I guess as long as it's. In there, how the original's road is should and not shall.
Right, and they're given on like a thirty-day window is what that says in the last, the last word, the last sentence. So it's not, it's not, you have to do it Tuesday at four o'clock or, you know, it's not that kind of a deal.
Um, okay, going back up a little bit, I guess I wasn't quite finished on the, on the feet setback for facilities on. Page seventeen. What point I was trying to make on the, I guess it got kinda muddled up in the municipalities part, but on also the residents, I feel like the one point nine eight is quite a bit more restrictive if you went to.
It's supposed to be two point six four.
If you went to one point five, that would be more in conformance with what our, what our current setbacks are, which are already pretty restrictive at locking out much of. Farmland that is out there. So one point five would match up pretty close to what we've got now, and these other ones are quite a bit more.
The idea of it was to give people a little bit more space between the residences and the facilities, so we don't have the kind of problems we've had in the last couple of years. That was the reason they increased them. So there was reasoning behind it.
But I also think with that though, Christie, that. The, the rule for liquid manure systems is it has to be injected, it can't be dumped on top. And I know from personal experience that if you put it in the dirt, it's gonna smell less than the ones that you, the solid manure you apply on top. Because it's in the ground.
No, we're, we're not talking about the, the notification thing anymore.
Well, you're talking, no, I, I know we're not talking about notification, I'm talking about the feet setback. If you look at the two-six-four feet per animal unit with residences. On liquid manure. Is that what we're talking about?
I guess I'm back on page seventeen at the very first one.
Yeah, page seventeen.
Seventeen, you're on?
Yeah.
Page seventeen where it says.
Yeah, cause, cause at the top it's one point nine, nine eight.
Right, I'm saying one point five makes the lower classes of our current ordinance or lower animal units. Match up closer to what our current ordinance has for facility setbacks.
But you're scratching out solid manure systems.
I said scratch out semi-solid and liquid, we're just working off the solid portion, I guess, pretty much ignoring manure systems, we're just using one residence. Setback, one municipality setback, we're not taking into account the different manure types.
Right.
Well, my point is the reason that they came up with a larger setback was because of all the discontent. And litigation that has been happening in the last couple of years, they felt that it was beneficial to increase the setbacks. If you wanna increase it to one point nine eight, I'm willing to compromise and go for that, but I'm really. If you wanna increase it to one point nine eight, I'm willing to compromise and go for that, but I'm really not willing to go lower than that. And then everybody has the same measurement to work with.
That's, uh, if, if I did, if I understood you right, if you had a thousand animal units, you'd take that times one point nine eight.
Yeah.
So that's nineteen hundred and eighty versus our current thirteen, whatever it is, twenty.
Right.
And didn't we talk a month ago about possibly changing it from a quarter of a mile to three eighths of a mile?
For the minimum, you mean?
Yeah, didn't we have that discussion? I think you did. Three eighths of a mile is, is not much different than nineteen hundred and eighty feet, but it's something different.
I think that the. Current ordinance is already pretty restrictive of locking out a lot of land for development. And if we're making it, we're gonna increase it in any way, that you're pretty much gonna eliminate any kind of modern agriculture facilities. There's not a whole lot of places that you can locate them to begin with, and then we're gonna make that even more restrictive. I think Don's got a poster on that here of what our current ordinance already locks out for land. Is that right, Don?
Yeah.
I think this is your, the budget. This is basically a map of the existing. Existing setbacks.
That's for class B?
A.
Class A.
Under the current.
Under the current. Under the current ordinance, that's.
Yeah, but the current one is two miles for class A.
You're talking class B, right, Don?
Yeah.
He's, you said class A, class A is the largest one.
Yeah.
And that's two miles, so of course that's gonna lock a lot.
Under the existing ones, it's.
Right.
Two miles.
It's two miles of class A.
District three do this map according to our planning zoning.
And that's not taking into account residences, that's just.
Yes, absolutely.
That's just municipalities?
That's just some churches and municipalities, four miles.
Four miles, so that's a four mile setback.
Yeah.
Right, but we're cutting that in half, we're cutting that down to two.
So. You take that and you see how much area in the county can you, you can think about it. Then if you go a half a mile from every house.
All these orange dots is houses, I would imagine.
Yeah. If you, if you circle a half a mile from every house, that tells you how much more of that land is gonna go out.
Pretty much all of it.
Well, it's not all of it. You're better off to locate a facility where it's not going to affect the public as much and then there won't, you know, nobody's gonna care.
Except for the farmers.
Well, the farmers won't have people hassling them if they're in an area where there is not much population.
There's none left.
You need to take everyone into consideration.
There's none left when you restrict it down to such a small area.
Well, you're talking about large operations again, you're not talking about a family farm.
That's, these are family farms, it doesn't matter if you think that it's not a family farm just cuz it has a modern barn or it has. X number of animal units doesn't mean it's not a family farm, there's laws against corporate farms owning things in the state already, it's state statute, they can't own it. There's no such thing as corporate farms in the state, it's all family farms.
The corporation owns the hogs, it owns the feed, it owns everything but the building. You're providing a pig space.
Building, labor. The person is free to contract with other people, not just the one corporation. It's owned and operated by the family farmer who is profiting from it, reinvesting the money in the community. It's a family farm, it's, what's the difference if I sell, if I contract to grow hogs for ABC company. Rather than I contract to sell my grain to Carville, what's the difference?
Well, the difference is that the, the contracted hog model, it's all vertically integrated. So you're right, the family farmer, the one that is the keeper of the hogs, providing the pig space. He spends his money in the local community, but all of the feed comes from the corporation. So that money is not being spent locally, they're not buying it locally, it comes from the corporate, that's my point.
Well.
The hogs come from corporate.
The hogs get it from, the cables here get it, I, I believe from.
Kaylerson. Kaylerson Kayler.
And we'd have it here if, uh, we could've got a feed mill approved. But I think if we go to two miles, then those circles become a lot smaller.
Right.
But this shows.
That's the four mile, that's the four mile.
Which we were at.
Right.
But that doesn't.
So you're already cutting it in half.
And that's not taking into account though, those circles are not taking into account any, any residences out in Ag Zone District. If you drew a circle around every residence out in Ag Zone District, I guarantee you there wouldn't be a spot on that map left.
There's still spots.
No, there wouldn't, and then it still doesn't help if you've got two spots in the whole county and you've got. However many farmers or farm families that want to expand, they can't all go and locate on that one spot.
Okay, coming across, let me just go across the top, for example, and that's the least populated, this is the top area. You, there's a, there's houses covering number one, and number two, and number three, number blank section here, but there's a house right across the road here, there's one here, and there's one there.
We have a densely populated county.
Well, all I'm telling you, all I'm telling you is that if we make it a greater distance, you're, you're just gonna lock it out, there will be no.
It, it's not that much of a, of, that's, it's not that significant of a change.
That's wrong.
And you are, you are.
This map, this map absolutely shows you that you're wrong.
That map also, we just cut that municipality setback in half.
Where, where do you see a section over here where there isn't an orange dot? That's a house. That's somebody living there.
And they're paying taxes on that house.
Absolutely right.
And they're living in our community and they're buying things from that community, from that home.
Most, most of them in that area up there decided to leave you, but that's their, their decision. But if you wanna lock the whole thing up, just increase that setback and. We'll raise the corner side.
This is, this is Sherry and, and Joe's calculations.
What I'm saying is already under the current ordinance, you're locking out just about the whole county, so I don't think that it's reasonable to make the setback more restrictive than it already is. And that's where I came up with the one point five feet per animal unit, makes it very similar to what we have currently.
So can we put the one point five with the reasoning that you have and presented to Joe and Sherry to see what they say?
I think it's too, I think it's too little.
But ultimately, isn't it after the commission to decide?
Yes.
So, let me just put it down as one point five with the justification, have them vote, if they don't like it, then come back and we'll talk about.
Why don't we vote on the one point five, cuz I'm proposing one point nine eight. For the foot. Marker. So I'm using their number, the least restrictive that they set up for the solid manures, the one point nine eight is my proposal.
So you wanna make a motion to vote on that?
Yep, I'll make a motion to vote on one point nine eight as the foot restriction for setbacks for residents. So.
Is there a second?
Can I have a second? One second.
Alright, well then, let's vote, yes is to go with one point nine eight and no is to consider something else. So, do we just?
No.
You can pull it.
You wanna pull it? Barkle?
No.
Heavley?
Yeah.
Kettering?
No.
Michael?
No.
Schultz?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Hoffman?
No.
Four no's, three yes. I'd make a motion that it be one point five feet per animal unit, minimum thirteen twenty, quarter mile. For the residence. Section for municipalities, it's two point two feet per animal unit, minimum half mile or twenty six forty.
Second.
He said two point, two point two animal units and a minimum of twenty six forty.
Yes.
Okay, but the two point two was just for municipalities, right?
Just for municipalities, one point five for residents other than owner.
You can vote on both of them together.
Right.
But if you want one and not the other.
That's my motion as it stands.
Could you repeat one more time, I'm sorry, it's not ready.
One point.
One point.
So, the motion is one point five, minimum of thirteen twenty for residents other than the owner. And active church business, school, whatever, and then two point two or minimum of twenty six forty for municipalities.
Right. Ready? Barkle?
Yes.
Heavley?
Yeah.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
No.
Weiss?
No.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Five yes, two no.
Fortunately, it looks like most of the rest of the pages are crossed out.
On the manure application setback chart, that one, I guess if you look at. My comparison sheet I made, it'd be on the second page of that. On bottom section, manure application, irrigated or surface applied. As you can see. A lot of those ones have increased. As far as the application setbacks. And we still have a, to be determined on the. Residents' surface and irrigated application. On the. Public right of ways irrigated, moving it from one hundred to three hundred and fifty. I don't know if that's a practical goal for people that actually are using irrigation. Uh, that's near a right of way just cuz it's near a gravel road or something that has to stay three hundred and fifty feet back into the field, I don't think that's. Reasonable.
Is there a. A law on that as far as just straight irrigation of water? About.
Yeah, they're not supposed to like, they're not supposed to, um, oh, destroying the road.
Yeah, most of it's just an adjustment that needs to be done on the end of the machine that doesn't let it.
Doesn't let the gun spray it over top of the road.
You're not supposed to be spraying it through a big gun.
Several of them do it that kind of.
That's, that's outlawed in the ordinance, you're not supposed to be able to spray manure through a big gun.
No.
It's supposed to be incorporated.
No, the irrigation should be used if it uses drops, but it can't use the gun.
Right, right.
But what we've got here is this, what, that's not the issue here, the setback is the issue where it's three hundred and fifty feet off of the road right of way.
Yeah, they're, well, you know, they have to stop.
You'd have to somehow shut your whole pivot off.
Pivot, make it.
And get past that spot and then go, but, I mean, three hundred and fifty feet off the road. I mean, most of these things aren't gonna be next to a highway or anything, they're gonna be next to a gravel road, most likely a township road or something. And I don't see a need for it to be three hundred and fifty feet off the road.
Like the one at the sale barn, when that one. When they're paying attention and the wind is blowing in the long direction that wants to drift over on the table road a lot. And generally, somebody will call them and then they shut, just shut it off. Not really good for washing your car, none of your other locations. But they've had quite a few complaints about that one, but they're pumping gray water off the, the dunes, they're pulling through that, so.
And the current ordinance is already a hundred feet, so are they staying a hundred feet away and it's still drifting onto the road?
Yeah, but I don't know that they're that far. You know, if the end gun is not working or, you know, you get a forty mile an hour south wind and those fine, the fine spray is what drips out on the road.
That's coming off a gun?
No.
Right.
It'll still come off the nozzle, you know, the river, not very, but. Three fifty might be a little bit. Tough to.
Is there a compromise number?
Is there a compromise number?
What do you?
Put in there that it's not, not to enter the public right of way?
Not to enter the, so leave it at those. Hundred that the current is, but then put, add the caveat that it can't drift into the right of way.
Drift into the right of way? That would give you room to enforce it.
I would think that would be a lot easier than running a tape measure out in the field.
What you want to add is a significant fine if it does drift.
Well, you have to, yeah. You know, it's.
You have to enforce it.
It's no different than the straight irrigation systems pumping on the gravel roads, softening the road.
I agree.
And then, you know, it creates a problem there too, so. And I don't have ones like.
I don't like it when. Eight wheel drive tractors pull out the road with mud all over them and for a mile you're driving over mud.
Yeah, they're supposed to clean that up.
You can get arrested for that.
Construction company does that, they find the living devil out of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're supposed to clean it up if it's on a public building.
I heard lots of stories from Dale about. His dad catching him out on the road, not having cleaned his tires off.
Yeah.
Then it's back to the road with the scoop shovel.
So would anybody be okay with one hundred feet, but then adding that the, it cannot drift onto the road right of way?
I would be.
That's fine, yeah.
That's the purpose, to keep it off the road, to keep it off, out of the right of way. It's gonna be hard to regulate. Three hundred and fifty feet of cropland.
Right.
I don't think you'd be able to enforce that.
I would suggest that you keep the residence restrictions at three thirty and seven fifty as they are right now. For surface applied and irrigated. And what do you think would be a fair number for the injection incorporated within twenty four hours? Mister Michael?
Where's, where are you reading it, Kristy, give me?
I'm looking at the chart here, the same.
Page nineteen.
Page nineteen.
Okay.
And then on his page, on the second page there, near the bottom of this column, it says residents, not the owners. Other than the operator.
Yeah.
And the current setbacks are three hundred and thirty feet. And seven hundred and fifty feet, depending on if it's surface or irrigated. So those are the current restrictions and I suggest we just stick with those.
Yeah, the current ones are what, three thirty and seven fifty?
Correct. And it's blank for the injection or incorporated within twenty four hours, so I'm looking to you for a suggestion for that. As you said, once it's incorporated, it diminishes its offensiveness substantially.
It's thanks for a couple of days.
Right. So.
Is the incorporation thing, is it twen- I think it's forty eight though, isn't it?
I think it's supposed to be, I thought it was twenty four. I thought that's what it was.
Yeah, I know it's someplace in here, but.
Yeah, it'll be.
Alright, yeah, it is, it's on, it's scratched out on page twenty three, I remember eleven.
On page twenty three, okay.
Twenty four hours.
I mean, nobody's gonna be standing there with a stopwatch.
Hmm, I'm not so sure of that. I had a lady that's called and swore she smelled. The hog manure from Harmelink's. Feed yard across, across the river over by Mission Hill. After talking to her for four or five minutes, I realized what she was talking about, well. That hog feed lot had been closed, buried three years previous. So people are always gonna. Complain. When they smell something.
Had them complain about them before they were even pigs in them. Either way.
Okay, so what do you want for a setback? For incorporated?
On the incorporated one?
I don't see it in there. Don't know why.
On the twenty four hour thing you're talking about, or?
He talks about the droughts.
The one I was reading, she was on page twenty three on number eleven at the top, it's scratched out.
I guess the nu- yeah, number eleven had a hundred feet, I guess, I don't know.
Oh, okay, there you go.
I didn't have that on.
Rather than other than the operator.
We just leave it that.
Yeah.
That'll work. Yeah, sorry, I skipped that.
Generally, if the lots are. In conformance with the zoning standards, the house should be no closer than seventy five feet. To the lot line. Anyway, so that's only another twenty five feet.
Twenty five feet, yeah.
Anything else in section five nineteen?
Well, that would be probably where you would reinsert section five nineteen, section ten four, that has to do with the notifications, wouldn't you think, Gary? That was probably where it would go in, because we're still talking about manure management. Um, in section five on page. Twenty where it's struck. Um, and I realize that this is having to do with the um. The setbacks, and I think. This language was, was deficient in that it should have said no less than thirteen hundred and twenty feet. But I think if we have that table with. That designated already, no less than a quarter mile, it should be fine.
Where at are you talking about?
Um. It's, it's information that's gonna be struck anyway, so I guess it's just a moot point, never mind. Because we already set the minimum distance at thirteen twenty, so that should be sufficient. I just made a note of that as being um. A problem in its previous language, so. And we've got some, oh, nevermind, it's all right. Um.
So the last five or six pages are all deletions, right?
Yeah, the last five or six pages.
Except for five twenty has the language modified a little bit, but I don't think anybody has problems with that, I think that's a beneficial thing.
Section five twenty.
Right.
Page twenty four.
See, there's blue on there, that means that it's been changed.
It basically just talks about the broker and the permit stuff.
And we had that long discussion that night about if circumstances change for some reason, then they can put those into consideration. You know, a death in the family or.
Change it from two years to five years and then the board can grant exceptions to the rule.
So with that, I guess we made our first pass through it. Times ten sixteen. You guys want to go back and hammer through any of the other stuff tonight, or do we want to leave it for?
The next meeting.
I'd like to see this go to the county commission as soon as possible. I'd not like to see it until later months. But I would suggest in. Consideration to this group. Is that, yeah, if we, the product that we send to the county commission and they have. Challenges to any of that. Would we be willing to have a joint meeting with the commission to discuss our reasoning on. The document that we've forwarded to them?
Right, but we're not finished with it yet.
Say again?
We're not finished with it yet.
What's left?
All of the contentious stuff.
What about the uh. Ag waiver? Did anybody decide on that, because I've seen like. At least three different versions of it that were different, but there isn't one in this.
Ag waiver?
The right to farm thing.
And that's already been struck down at the, the Supreme Court. I mean, if you, if you try to throw the right to farm thing in there, it's just gonna cause more litigation.
If you had come to the meeting last night and listened.
You thought of that, wasn't right.
You thought of that was not right.
Yeah, it has not been struck down by the Supreme Court.
Well, that's still, we, we don't have. A document to look at.
There, there isn't one in this.
My suggestion that would, would be that if we choose to put that in there, and I think we discussed it at the last meeting and decided that that was something that should be in there. Uh, that we uh. Have Gary work with. Uh, Brian Donahue. To uh. Create a right to farm document.
I guess my suggestion would be to add that to section five sixteen.
But isn't there already protections at the state level?
The point of the right to farm. Notice in our zoning ordinance. It more clearly states intent of the ag zone district as to being to protect the right to farm. And gets rid of. Gets rid of some of the confusion or what people may perceive to be the intent of the zoning ordinance. It clearly defines it that if you are in an ag zone district, it's ag, it's not a residentially zoned district. It's not a commercial zone district, it's an ag zone district, and these are the things that happen in an ag zone district. And then that way, there is no confusion about it when a new residence comes in. And they say, I bought my land out on a piece of ground and it's all picturesque and I don't think anything should ever change. It eliminates that argument because you are in an ag zone district and you are being notified that things. That you may not agree with, but are ag and are in conformance with that district may come in the future.
In addition, in addition to that, I think he said that uh. Having the Right to Farm Act. Is a very uh. Protective for the county. Because if, once again, you have the argument of, well, here's what, here's what you signed, here's the document you saw. Now, back to Christie. You may be, you may well be right, some judge may rule against it. There's no guarantee that that won't happen. But. He says it gives him a lot stronger. Position with both, for both the county and the, the producer.
Did he say, did he write Minnehaha?
Did he talk about Minnehaha?
Did he write, did he have us write the file?
Yes, I think he did.
So.
I think he said he wrote Minnehaha and he was working on Lincoln, wasn't he?
Lincoln Haslam.
Pardon?
Lincoln Haslam.
Lincoln Haslam, okay.
So this is gonna be attached to your deed?
Say again?
You're supposed to sign this and get attached to your deed.
What is the purpose, it's a notice, or what is it?
Notification to anybody that, that uh. Wants to build in an egg zoned area, that there are certain practices in agriculture that cause dust. Smell. Noise and various things and in an egg zoned area, if you want to build there, fine, but it's. You need to know these things happen.
So it's just a notice?
Pardon?
It's just a notice?
It's a notice, yes.
You have to sign it?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's more than a notice?
That's more than a notice then, because a notice is a notification.
It's a notification you're signing that you. Have read it and you understand it and you're going to follow it, it's a notice covenant.
Does it get attached to the deed or not?
Yes.
No.
No.
Can be.
No.
Yeah, it can be, but I, I.
No, no.
I was leaning towards just.
Absolutely can be.
Can be.
You should not have the right to put a restriction on someone's property that goes on into perpetuity. That's what happens when you attach something to a deed.
And a residence being built out into mag zone district is affecting all the land around it in perpetuity.
I think it's a hundred years.
Yeah, but it doesn't, the residence does not. Impact your health. And your ability to enjoy your own property.
Yes, it does.
Because your kFO. Spreads methane and all kinds of particulates and biologicals onto your property that you did not. Get the economic benefit from, and it does it for miles around.
SDSU has objectively measured this and has come up with the conclusion that that's wrong and it doesn't actually spread things miles around and affect everybody.
The wind doesn't blow here, have you been outside today?
Yes, the wind blows, but as far as having an actual measurable effect on the surrounding property, it's basically zilch. Especially when you apply any kind of setbacks that we have here. And. When you put a residence out in an ag zone district, you are in perpetuity affecting the landowners around you. Because you're not allowing them to expand or build or have any kind of economic opportunity because of your residence.
You can have economic opportunity of ways that do not impact someone else's health.
So you are limiting, you're going to limit their ability to use their land the way that they see fit. In conformance with the zoning district they're in, you're not in a residentially zoned district. I could see your argument if I was trying to build a new hog barn down by the lake, uh, south of Stringers on Deer Boulevard where there's hundreds of houses. That makes sense that we don't put. A hog barn there, that's not an ag zone district, that's a residentially zoned district. We're not going, it's not compatible to mix in a bunch of residences into an ag zone district without any kind of requirements on them. And you have to, at some point, you have to draw the line and say. Yes, you are in an ag zone district, you have to realize what goes on in an ag zone district. And that these things can happen and that you don't have the right to stop everybody because you want your own little slice of heaven out here in ag zone district.
But I don't want it on my deed, no.
I would, I wouldn't either, but uh. But if you want to build out there in, in an ag zone district, it's not residential. Then that's just one of the conditions, just like all the rest of this zoning ordinance, the whole entire zoning ordinance, not just article five, the whole entire ordinance. Is conditions that you have to follow and that's just. And that's just another condition.
And it doesn't put stuff on your deed.
Then I want a good neighbor ordinance, and they have to promise that they are going to protect the environment. And they're gonna protect the water. Because that impact is forever. Ask Iowa how their waters are. Ninety-eight percent contaminated.
By some measurements, some studies.
Yeah.
Not by all.
No. Down in, in response to your original question, yes, I would. Entertain a joint meeting between the two because it's kinda fruitless for us to go through all this stuff. If we're not somewhat on the same page.
Yep.
With the commission.
Well, I'm very hopeful that, uh, the document we take up is ninety-eight percent. Acceptable, but if there's a couple things, I think. It'd be to all, everyone's advantage to sit down and talk it, talk it out.
So my question is, do we need to? Have another meeting with this board before we forward anything onto the county commission? Or do we need to hammer anything else out? In what we've got here? Or do you think it's ready to go on? Like Kathy pointed out just a second ago, we don't have. The right to farm incorporated into this. Document. As of now.
Uh, I, yeah, well, that's, that's okay, uh, but we talked about it at our last meeting, the right to farm, and we decided that was. As, as I recall, I could be wrong. But as I recall, it was, uh, an absolute. Agreement that we were gonna have it in there. The downside of it's very little, I.
The downside is it restricts my rights. If you're not a farmer, you don't have any rights.
How is it, you're living in an ag zoned area?
Right, but I was here first.
Well, that's a good point.
I was here first, there were no cables around me anywhere.
When you're in, if you already have an existing building or house or residence, you don't. You would not have to. Sign this right to farm or anything, cause you're already existing. This is only new, this is only news, new residences moving in.
Well, two of the versions I saw also included if you had, if you did any major remodeling. Or additions to your home, you had to go through.
Absolutely, it was not considered in the discussion we had last night, he absolutely said. You can remodel, uh. On, on, on your blueprint, on your foot, footprint, I mean. You can do that.
So if you wanna add a room, then you gotta sign your deed away.
No, that's not, that's not what this is saying, and that's. Where. I suggested add it to section five sixteen, so it's on new residences. Not. Not onto existing, if you wanna. Put an addition on your garage or whatever, it's not going to attach this to your deed.
Gary, I can't remember, did we? Did we get, uh, when we went through the. Ten or twelve counties that we, we looked at, did we have the right to farm? Uh, was it on, I don't think we. I don't think we looked that up. Almost all of them in the state do.
But, um, but I guess my impression was to do that, we were talking about. New residents, not, not additions.
Well, yeah, I think that's. I agree.
Again, that's why I said put it in the new residence section. Is that something that you could incorporate into the new residence?
Well, what I'll put is I'll put. Right to farm covenant and, yeah, whatever that document. Ends up being, it'll, it'll go into that slot.
So Dennis, you and I will go on.
I'll go, yeah.
I'll go.
Okay.
Well, I think it's.
I'd, I'll just bring it up to over and see if they, they will agree to, to do it, they may say, no, we don't wanna do it, send it back and. Have them rework it, well. We've already done that once, so.
Well, my frustration is that if you. You've put all this work into it, then you get it there and they shoot it down anyway. It'd been nice to know what they were thinking before I.
Yeah.
Wasted all my time sitting here. So. But I would like to see us adjourn this meeting. And move on to another time when we can. Sharp clear and not have anything else to. Work on, because it's the hour of light.
I'll give you two minutes.
As I sat here and listened and I, uh, as discussed this, uh, five nineteen, the dead's pen. I think you required a chain link fence. Uh, if I was, uh, if I was listening correctly, I'd like you to get rid of that, uh, most dead sins are much more substantial than a chain link fence. Uh, don't put restrictions like that on there. Um, because of the type of equipment they pick up those animals with anymore, a chain like fence would last probably three months. And it'd be gone. I think if you look around the county to any of them that are out there that actually have one, uh, they're much more substantial than a chain like fence. Um, and as far as the notifications goes for manure application. Where the problem comes with notification is, I've got one field that has thirty-nine different residences within that. Half mile. Um, so trying to keep that up is just about impossible. Um, I know, and you know, in other places out further, uh, into less, uh. More, less people, you know, it's, it'd be a lot easier, but some certain fields are, are just about next to impossible to try to keep. Up with the people that move in and out of residences and trying to keep that straight, so. Uh, if it's injected or ready, uh. There isn't that much, uh. I mean, a couple days, maybe, whatever, it just depends on the weather, you never know, but. I, I, I find I've. Struggled with trying to notify residences of, of when to, when to apply. Um, with that many residences around there, so thank you.
Create an email list, and then you hit one.
No, it's not the email list, it's fine for this year. Okay, next year, four people have changed, and I've gotta go find them, and I've gotta run them down, it's not all that easy to find anybody anymore, they don't have phone numbers, they're not in the phone books. Uh, you can go to the tax records and the people that are living there aren't on the tax records, so trying to notify the residences is, it just gets to be a real. It's a hassle, so how to notify them is, is something that's, it's hard to, hard to do.
Ain't my flagpole ideal that good? Run the flag up?
A flag with a poop emoji on it?
Gary, can we add something about the notification that you just have to make your best attempt to do it? Something to that effect?
Uh, I have no issue putting something in it, like. Kathy said, though, I think there's a variety of versions out there, that's why I was asking about the many ahah one. If he specifically wrote that, and that be the one.
I'm talking, I was just talking about where he was addressing with the, it'd be on. Section five nineteen, three H.
Oh, the screen fence?
No, it's, three H is the, the. Notification about manure application.
Makes a reasonable attempt.
Something like that. Right.
Yeah, that's fine.
That sounds.
And like you said. With the chain link fence, so are you saying more substantial? Like, what is it, is it like a concrete barrier around it, or what is it?
I have plaster blocks. Uh, there's these things that look like, uh, you can use other things. But, I mean, they, they load them with gravel anymore. So, if they get banged into. So, anything that saves them very long is gonna be my portion of the annual change. I, I wouldn't put restriction on. On, on what you'd use to build it, I mean, could you put on a wall? And have a part wall there if you wanted to? Uh, moss blocks were fine. So, I, I don't know if I put restriction of what is built on it.
Maybe just the containment area that, that can't be accessed by dogs or coyotes or something that's.
Why don't we just put a substantial screen?
Yeah.
What they need to keep dogs out of.
You know, because a, a barbed wire fence isn't gonna do it.
So, so. We're really, we're really, what we've been talking about is hogs. But should we also be addressing animal composting? Cause that happens a lot in rural agriculture. No, it takes about a week for a sow, a dead sow, in, in properly composted to disappear.
If it's all properly managed.
The sheriff is notified before that, before, before that, I'm on a time. They deal with it.
I guess with the dead animal storage sites, I think it is a good point, we shouldn't. Totally limit it to being just a chain link fence. And I think if you could word it in some way that it's basically not accessible to animals or whatever.
With scavengers or however you wanna put it. Yeah, animals is good.
Alright.
Sounds like we're pretty much done for the night.
I, I'd like to see it, uh, to the position where we're comfortable. Either having a, a document to send to the commission or highlighting. Areas in the document. That.
Well, are we gonna have a joint meeting or what?
Pardon?
Are we gonna have a joint meeting or what?
He doesn't know yet.
I don't know yet, I, I gotta ask the commission. Yeah, I, I can understand why you're asking that question, so.
I'll modify, highlight some of the things you thought, but just.
The permitted special uses? Yeah, permitted special uses?
No consensus. And, and we'll go from there.
And if. I'm gonna suggest it to them, uh. Three of you said you'd be interested in coming, I wanna suggest it to the commission if they don't agree with. And can't come to agreement on those selected ones that you, you highlight. Uh, that we have, uh. A, a joint meeting where we discuss it out.
May the rest of you be open to a joint meeting?
Okay.
Alright, so with that, I think if, with the revisions Gary's got noted.
I'll get those out to you tomorrow.
Okay.
You mean you don't wanna do the homework tonight, I just can't believe that. I'm kidding, you know, right?
I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Motion second.
I'd like every, to thank everybody for open and honest, uh, discussions.